Okay, good evening and welcome to the April 9th, 2019, meeting of the Millbrae City Council. Can we have a roll call, please? Okay, and Mayor Lee?
All council members are present.
And just for the record, our council tour is still going on, so Mayor Lee is calling in from the Baltimore Hyatt Regency in her Harbor Hotel. So if anybody is watching from Baltimore, you can go join the mayor in the lobby there. Okay, will you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, so first on our agenda, we have a proclamation proclaiming April as Rosacea National Awareness Month, and we have Councilmember Schneider here to receive the proclamation. And if you want to, can I just read it, or if you'd like to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
I am sure all of you are wondering what rosacea is. Rosacea is a widespread and chronic skin disorder that affects more than 16 million Americans. Dr. John Wolfe, Chairman of the Dermatology Department at Baylor College of Medicine, said, "The earliest signs of rosacea are often overlooked because people assume that they are temporary and will go away. Unfortunately, without medical treatment, the effects of rosacea often persist and become increasingly severe." The National Rosacea Society designates April as Rosacea Awareness Month to promote this awareness about this common disorder. The goal of Rosacea Awareness Month is to educate the public about the disease and to bring greater public acceptance and understanding of this disorder, as well as to get more people who may have rosacea to seek medical help before it gets worse. Therefore, and actually I have a couple of other rosacea whereas's to add, rosacea is a genetic disease. It's most commonly found in people of Celtic and German descent, although it can be found in every race in the country. Most often dermatologists miss this disease, and what it does is, in your 30s or later, you start flushing, and if you don't control it, your blood bristles break in your face. If you're a man, your nose can grow bulbous. If anybody remembers W.C. Fields, he was an actor that had rosacea. What happens is people with rosacea are widely discriminated against because people think they're alcoholics, or people think that they're angry all the time, and it isn't the case. It's simply that the skin flushes more than the common person. It took me 10 years of going to dermatologists to finally find one when I ended up in tears at Kaiser, and they sent me to a specialist in San Jose to say, "You have rosacea. It can be controlled by diet. You learn which foods to eat and not eat. You learn to avoid other triggers like very, very cold weather, very windy weather, alcohol, things like that." And the number-one mission they try to tell those of us who have been diagnosed with rosacea is to talk about it. Take away the stigma of people who live with a red face. And I would caution all of you, if you've ever gone up and said to somebody, "Wow, your face is really red," how much that hurts when someone says that to you, or how much someone thinks that you're angry when you're not, it's simply your face flushing. So I'm very appreciative of the mayor of letting me bring this issue up. Every April is Rosacea National Awareness Month. Again, it tends to be a Northern European disease, but I have a friend from India who has it, so you never know. And please be nice to people, and please, if you are flushing, again, if you're, if people are telling you you have adult acne, no, you have rosacea. Go talk to your dermatologist and keep fighting until they help you figure out your triggers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. And next, we have a proclamation proclaiming April 27th, 2019, as Arbor and Earth Day. Can Shelley Rider and Ken Crissetti please join me at the podium?
Okay. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, which have become an annual event called Arbor Day, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, this is the 26th year that the city of Millbrae has been designated a Tree City USA. And whereas, the city has planted over 3,000 trees, which has helped to reduce soil erosion by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean our air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, the city has supported Earth Day since its inception on April 22nd, 1970, when it was created by United States Senator Gaylord Nelson to increase awareness about our planet's fragile ecosystems and educate people on the responsible environmental stewardship. And whereas, the city is committed to preserving our environment and contributing to a sustainable community by supporting programs for water conservation, climate protection, recycling, and water pollution prevention. And whereas, the city celebrates and supports Arbor and Earth Day by implementing a variety of activities to engage our community's awareness of and participation in preserving our natural environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2019, as Arbor and Earth Day. And we encourage the community and business to use this day to celebrate the earth and commit to creating a cleaner and healthier environment for a better quality of life for current and future generations. We invite our community to join the city in planting trees and picking up litter on this day at the spur trail near Taylor Boulevard at 10:00 a.m. So on behalf of the council, we'd like to make this, present this to you.
Do you want to come up first?
Sure.
Would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Holber, and good evening, members of the city council. We hope everyone can join us on April 27th at 10:00 a.m. on the spur trail near Taylor Boulevard, right across the street from Taylor Middle School. And from 10:00 a.m. to noon, we'll plant trees with the help of the Parks Division, and we'll do a citywide litter pickup. And so it'll be a fun community event, and we hope to see everyone there. And also, in celebration of the 49th Earth Day, we'll staff an education table on April 17th, that's a Wednesday, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., right on Broadway, near the Verizon store, where we'll greet the public, provide environmental handouts, and answer questions, so we hope to see you there. And do you want to talk about trees?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. This year, there is a section between the spur trail that is in desperate need of some trees, so this year we'll be planting 20 24-inch box coastal live oaks in that section through there, so looking forward to that.
Great, thank you very much. That certainly will make, help liven up that part of the spur trail and help to beautify our community. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Councilmember Papin?
Thank you, guys, for everything you do here.
I knew what you were going to ask me.
Go ahead.
The wholesale will be pre-drilled for everybody, so.
Yes, and that staff does such a wonderful job of that. I just had one quick question, because down the coast here, the sudden oak death is back. Is there any way we can prep the soil, or is there anything to do to help save these glorious trees which will be planted?
You know, at this point, we just have to monitor everything and just, you know, keep on it.
Great, thank you so much for all the great work.
Yes.
I would only add, for those people in the community who go hiking in various parts of California, when you come back, make sure that you clean your boots. And I'm going completely blank, I think you soak them, just the bottoms, in some water with some, it's going to be something that's going to kill bugs.
It'll be offline.
Yeah, so maybe we can put that out there. That's the number-one way, is to not track disease from place to place, and do not bring dead oak branches back to Millbrae.
Well, thank you very much, and look forward to seeing you all there on the 27th.
I just wanted to provide some of our Earth Day handouts that we'll hand out to the public, including a metal reusable straw that has a cleaner and some poppy seeds, and a cellophane compostable wrap. I'll provide those to Elaine to hand out, then.
Perfect, thank you.
Just a quick question. Mr. Crissetti, I learned today at another meeting that as part of the Electrification of Caltrains project, there's a grant program for trees. San Bruno told me they're getting 300 trees donated to them through the electrification process. I don't know the source of the grant, but maybe we can look into that for more tree planting programs.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a proclamation proclaiming April as Celebrate Diversity Month. Whereas, Celebrate Diversity Month was founded in 2004 to recognize and honor the different cultures, backgrounds, and life experiences of people throughout the world. And whereas, the United States of America was founded on the principles of freedom and equality, we're a country of immigrants, we're all are welcome. And whereas, while no other nation holds such a diverse society, equality and justice for all, regardless of ethnic heritage, skin color, sexual orientation, or religion, take a great amount of work and sacrifice. And whereas, America's history has taught us that we must always recognize and celebrate the diversity of all the people who have made our country great, and never forget who we are and where we come from. And whereas, the city of Millbrae recognizes, appreciates, and celebrates the heritage and life experiences of all. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Celebrate Diversity Month. We hereby encourage our community and businesses to use this month to welcome, learn, and understand the people from all over the world to celebrate Diversity Month. All right, next, we have an agenda overview and staff briefing. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, City Manager. Real quick, a couple of items. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, over at the Millbrae Library with Basqua, which is our Bay Area Water Supply Organization, there's a Waterwise Edible Organic Gardening Workshop, and that starts at 7:00 p.m. over in the library, so you can learn composting and Waterwise Edible Organic Gardening. Also, again, Millbrae goes to the movies. This will be a week from this Friday, on April 19th, the third Friday of every month. It will start at 6:00 p.m. at Central Park. Christopher Robin will be the show that we'll be screening. We'll have food trucks and games for kids, and it's just a great family event, so we hope to see everybody 6:00 p.m. Central Park on April 19th. Also, we are accepting applications for a number of committees and commissions, so we are seeking applicants who are residents who wish to serve on one of several Millbrae Commissions and Advisory Committees. To learn more about this, you can visit our website, the City of Millbrae website, or you can contact the city clerk at 650-259-2414. And real quick, the listing of vacancies, we have one vacancy on our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, we have two vacancies on our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, who just had a terrific art show over the weekend, one vacancy on our Parks and Recreation Commission, and one vacancy on our Economic Vitality Advisory Committee. So I would encourage anybody that's interested to look on our website, contact the city clerk for an application. Also, we did reopen the Millbrae Skate Park on March 29th. It went through numerous renovations, security improvements, signage, we've cleaned it, and that skate park is now open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. every day, and we hope that people keep it clean. And we do have a meeting tomorrow night with the Citizens Group on the skate park over at the great room in our Temporary Recreation Center. And then lastly, with all of the rain and sun, we know that there are a tremendous amount of weeds and grasses out there. I've spoke with Public Works today, we met, and over the next several weeks, our crews will be out there when it gets a little bit drier to knock down the weeds and get those taken care of. So we are aware of it with, again, the rains and sunshine, so we'll be, we'll be working on that. Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, in terms of the agenda, item number two, we have our calendar of events for an information item, reports of bills and claims for information, and then a report out of our two closed session meetings on March 26th, 2019. Item number three is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of March 26th, 2019. There are no oral reports from city committees or commissions this evening. Then that will be followed by public communication, and that's anybody that, from the public that would like to speak on any item not on the agenda this evening. Then we move to our consent calendar, item number five, which is to consider a resolution approving the first addendum to the agreement with the Millbrae Community Television for Broadcasting Video and Channel Management Services for the fiscal year 2018-19 and the next fiscal year, 2019-2020. It increases the total compensation to the amount not to exceed $131,650. This amendment is actually a $10,000 amendment, but brings the total not-to-exceed amount up to $131,650. Public hearing items, item number six, we have the Millbrae Sarah Station Project. This is city council review for the design review permit and master sign program. Item number seven is the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan Amendment. This is a companion item to number, item number six, to do a minor amendment to the specific plan. Item number eight is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a design review permit for a single-family home at 210 Vallejo Drive. Under existing business, item number nine is review of the Recreation Center Restoration Project to receive information and the compendium of all the work that has been done to date and receive that final report, as well as authorize $520,735 for the next phase of the design of that contract. And the last item on the agenda this evening is item number 10, and that's consider, consider adopting a resolution authorizing City Manager or designated to execute an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with New City America, increasing their compensation by $67,500 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $112,500 to extend the term of their contract through December 31st of this year for continued work on the Business Improvement District. So with that, Vice Mayor, that concludes the agenda overview.
Okay, I had suggested to the City Manager earlier that we, I believe the public hearings likely will take the longest, especially with the Sarah Station Project, so I'd recommend we do the consent calendar, and then items nine and 10, and then item eight, and then finish with the Sarah Station, items six and seven. Is that okay with the council? Okay. Okay. And then we have a report out from two closed sessions, Mr. Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council held two closed sessions on March 26th, there were no reportable actions at either session.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have an approval of the minutes of March 26th, 2019. Do we, oh, Councilmember Papin?
Yeah, I'd like to pull those, review some of the comments, can we pass those to the next meeting, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Except I'm not here at this meeting unless I call or Skype in.
Okay, well, maybe if you have any comments, Councilmember, if you can submit them to staff, and then those can be shared with all council members in advance, so everyone's comments can, comments on the comments can all be taken for the record? Okay. So next is public communication. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. All speakers will have three minutes. If you'd like to speak, if you could submit a speaker slip to the city clerk. Okay, seeing none, public communication is closed. Do a roll call for future votes.
Item number five passed unanimously.
Oh, yes, Councilmember.
I just want to say that I'm happy to unanimously pass this amongst our colleagues, but yet, going forward in the future of Millbrae, if we could, like, keep up with the technology that MCTV seems to be ahead of us a little bit, and maybe at our presentations, especially with the land use issues that we've had, if we could somehow maybe make that a pattern in our goal planning, or somehow get that on the agenda where we could enhance our technology in this room.
All taken. Okay, next, we have item number nine, which is for the Recreation Center Restoration Project, and we have Ms. Holbert, take your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we are here with another update on the Millbrae Recreation Center. This is to accept the final Millbrae Recreation Center Conceptual Design Report. So this is a compilation of all the work that's been done over the last year and a half or so, to bring us to the point that, at the end of February, that you accept that proposed conceptual design. We'll talk a little bit about that. We'd like to have you consider approving a second addendum to the agreement with Group Four to continue into schematic design and authorize an increase in revenue and appropriations in the Recreation Center Capital Project Fund. The revenue is recognizing grant proceeds from the counties, from San Mateo County, of $500,000 towards this cost of schematic design and the increase in appropriations to cover the cost of this contract. So the conceptual design report is a significant document, it's got an executive summary, covers a number of categories, participation, the features of the building, the design, the process that was, that we went through, and there's also some significant reports. There's a sequel categorical exemption in this document, a market and operations analysis, parking and transportation analysis, a tree inventory, and Bayron, which was the wind study that helped decide how that building would be shaped. We've also documented all the presentations and minutes that were presented through this process to the advisory committee, the Parks and Rec Commission and City Council joint workshops, a presentation of the Planning Commission, separate presentations to Parks and Recreation, and an integrated design workshop with staff to identify any concerns, for example, with building, planning, fire marshal, public safety. So again, we had some significant outreach, so over 900 participants in both rounds of This was for the site plan, we previously adopted a master plan for the full Central Park area, that was adopted around February of last year, and so this focused on just the Recreation Center and the two parking spaces along with the sale in between. Again, the programmatic design, so the programmatic elements determined through this public outreach process outlined here, and then again in a floor plan. As we identified through the process, there's, there's some options in terms of how the first or second floor is laid out, and we'll address that through this schematic design process and ongoing outreach. So in February, you approved the park lanterns design options as a, as a result of review of the final two options, which again, took in input through all these processes and combined some features into this final design. So in terms of project funding, we've identified 12.3 million in funding that is in hand, including insurance proceeds, developer contribution, a land sale, currently pending with our city capital project funds, and the $500,000 grant just received from the county. We are exploring a number of additional funding options, we've applied for one Proposition 68 grant, we expect it here during this month, and a second one has an application process that starts this summer. We are looking at development impact fees that should be coming in, as well as an additional development impact fee study that is ongoing as we speak. We're looking in terms of a bridge to a low-interest loan from the county as we wait for development impact fees to be realized and recognized. That will be towards the end as this is a cash flow issue. We have some surplus property that we are starting the process, council has approved the process to sell that, the two residential parcels, continuing to look at foundations and donors, and have just received responses to a request for statement of interest for a partner for a preschool in the facility. So the next steps, we're continuing to look again at funding and implementation, and at the same time, we're moving into schematic designs. A key reason that we're continuing to move forward is to meet grant timelines, to continue to apply for grants, and to avoid significant construction escalation costs. So it was, it was a difficult decision, having funding from the county was an important part of us deciding to move forward, and we think we have a very good project competitive for these opportunities. So moving forward as part of the schematic design, there will be some study sessions with, with your council to identify site designs, some refinements in terms of the outdoor spaces, lighting concepts, hardscape, refinements of the building design, and at the end of July, there'll be a final presentation with schematic, final schematic drawings in the package, and then moving into the next steps, taking direction for those next steps. So again, what we're looking for this evening is acceptance of that final report, approving a second addendum to move into that schematic design phase, and authorize an increase in revenue and appropriations in that project fund. I do have Andrew here from Group Four, if there are questions for them, and Peter is also here from CSGR Project Manager. And I'm happy to answer questions as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Holbert. And I'm sure one of the questions everyone's going to be asking is about the funding, and there's actually an article about that in the paper this morning, so I don't know if you'd like to maybe go over the, a key piece of the funding plan, or the city manager, if you'd like.
Sure. So as we are, as we are looking at funding, we know that we will have development impact fees in the range of, you know, 14 to 20 million dollars. And so once those, we also know that the increase of 10,000 square feet of the community center from 15,000 or 16,000 to 25,000, that's 10,000 square feet more to accommodate future population and impact. So that's the impact that new development creates on the center, so that's about a $10 million fee of new development that would go into the additional expansion of the, of the center. And so we have been talking with the county, and they have been very gracious in, in talking to us and becoming more realistic once our development projects are approved, and we do have security in the collection of the future development impact fees. And as Ms. Holbert mentioned, then it becomes a cash flow problem. So, you know, we, we know that we have that future revenue, it's a matter of when will those units be absorbed, when will we issue permits? So we feel, and I feel strong about the package and the financing that we're putting together. It's creative, but yet it's low-risk. The good thing is, with a county loan and some of the other grants and things that, you know, that we're looking at, our interest rate will be about 2.5% instead of the 4.5% or 5% that general obligation bond or other forms of financing, so there'll be significant savings on the, on the interest on that, on that loan. So we feel that the combination of things are coming together, and we're looking forward to continuing to push this thing forward so we can break ground and have something constructed or start construction in 2020. As we've discussed, costs are continuing to increase about 10% a year, so each year we delay, that's, that's a significant amount of money, about $300,000, $350,000 a year.
Right, and, yeah, that's, that's a very important point, that we don't want, you know, we're talking about about a $30 million-ish budget now, and if this is delayed another year or two years, throw that number out the window, right? Now, I think one of the benefits of this package is that it would avoid a potential, it would avoid the need for a future bond measure or revenue measure, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments from the council? Is Councilman Schneider?
I have to admit that I did not have a chance to read the entire Millbrae Recreation Conceptual Design Report, and normally, I read everything, and there's a lot of good things in there. And I talked to the city manager if we could move forward with going into the schematic design phase, but if we could hold off on accepting the final conceptual design. We got it on Friday, I don't, I know all five of us were at, at the progress seminar, and then it was all the reading material tonight. I want to vote for it, but I can't vote on something I haven't read, especially when some of the things involve traffic that I feel it's important that I've read. It was great to hear in the staff report that the report said that whatever happens with the rec center, it's not going to cause undue traffic increases, but after that incident a couple of years ago where they made Palm Avenue two-hour parking, I feel the need to, to get to read that. So I hope that the rest of you will allow that to go to the next council meeting, or the May council meeting when I'm back in town, but I'm happy- But I'm happy to go forward with everything else.
Is that an able to the council?
The way I interpret the second addendum, it's a continuation. So if in fact we vote for it, it's still not engraved with exactly what you read or we didn't read.
It says that word, "accept." I'm not sure I know exactly what "accept."
So if we, so that's fair. I like the comment. But if we say that we're accepting the second addendum to the agreement, it actually says that we are...
No, no, no.
We have a continuation of everything that's going on.
I think she was referring to point two on the staff report here. Accept the final Millbury Recreation Center Conceptual Design Report.
Okay, but that's not our action. Our action is to accept the...
It's one of, one of two, one of two, one of three actions.
What are you speaking of, Ben? I'm sorry.
It's exactly what the Vice Mayor said. It's accept the final report. I just would, I love to accept it. I just want to read it first, and there just was no time. And then we can go ahead, we've received the information, and go ahead and adopt the funding change so that we can go forward with the schematic design.
So the addendum goes with what?
The addendum is to, no, the addendum is to contract with Group Four to continue their work. This is, I think, the more critical point, the more critical item at this point to keep things moving along.
Correct, they can get moving with the schematic drawings, which is the $540,000 budget action.
I was going to point out the text of the resolutions is not, we will mention excepting the reports. We couldn't include the text of the resolution without accepting the report.
Oh, I would not.
You don't need to edit that. You don't need to, if the council's interested in pursuing where you've suggested, they can simply adopt the resolution. You don't need to have any mention of something. You didn't see anything about it.
Yeah, that's just what I'm asking. Same thing.
Any other, oh yes, Councilwoman Holbrans?
I'm willing to make that accommodation. I'd just like to say that this is a compilation of what we've been talking about for the last year. So I'm hoping no surprises, what my review included. So it should be basically the same. But I'm happy to make that accommodation as long as we can move ahead here because the whole point is that we will be hopefully not accumulating higher costs by further delaying.
And it doesn't delay any grants?
It doesn't, especially if you approve the contract amendment this evening to get started on the schematic lines, because there's a critical path with some of the proposition.
600 pages.
Electronically, I just, I couldn't, electronic thing with my hand up, it just was too much.
With some of the Proposition 68 grant funding that we're seeing.
Okay, Mayor Lee, any comments or questions on the Recreation Center?
Yeah, my question is if we had a loan at 1%, is this the 1% or 2%? Do we have a cost, annual cost to the city?
It's approximately 2.5% Mayor.
Which is how many, how much approximately, how many dollars a year?
Well, we would have to calculate that. I'd have to bring that back to the council. And the way that the flow of funds would work, I would not anticipate needing that loan for probably two to three years from now. Based on the, based on the cash that we have in hand, based on the sale of the surplus property, it'll probably be two to three years in the future before we need to expend that money.
And for clarification, it would be paid back at the time that we receive the impact fees, right?
That is.
Probably not too much beyond that one. So likely won't be years of interest accumulating, right?
Correct, I'm thinking five to seven years.
I think it gives the council members who said they could bridge the gap of 600,000 a little more time to raise money, too.
So you're saying that the impact fee would cover the whole loan? I thought the impact, we need the impact fee in addition to the...
No, we would use the, we would use the future development impact fees to pay off the, from the county.
Okay.
Okay, any additional comments or questions?
What are we voting on?
So we would vote to approve the resolution, is that correct? But not to approve the full 600-page report. Not to accept the report. Not to accept the report at this time. We have a motion from Councilwoman Oliva, a second, a second from Councilwoman Schneider. Can she do a roll call? Can the clerk do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider? Vice Mayor Oliver?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The item passed unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, one more, one more comment. We will do a financial analysis that we'll bring back to the council so you can see if we wait, if we don't have a loan at 2.5%, we wait for the development impact fees versus cost escalation. So we will bring that back so you can analyze and see the cost benefit of whatever direction we move.
Just a request, the parking tree and the engineering study, if we could get them in a smaller increment, those are the three that I have, that haven't come before me. And I think that the neighborhood would definitely be able to read the parking one. I know the community enhancement would like to see the tree inventory. And I have visions of a money tree that we look at water storage as we break ground up there. So if I can read that, I can see if I can figure out other grant sources.
So just for the listening public, that report is on our website and it's accessible through our website. It is big.
Part of the problem with a big PDF like that, if we could possibly pull a couple of these out and just make them standalone documents.
Okay, we'll see what we can do so it's easier to download.
No, 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 still print them, but even scrolling through a huge PDF like that, it depends on your computer and how much time you've got.
Yeah, good point.
We broke out the appendices. We'll break them down further into the different reports.
Thank you.
Would you like to see this back then at the next meeting? Is that, is that the request, the report?
No, it's, we'll bring it back in probably second meeting in May.
First meeting in May.
First meeting in May.
First meeting in May. I'm on the Millbury sister city trip to Malta for the next council meeting, so I won't be here. So thank you for the accommodation.
Okay, next we have item number 10, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager does need to accept, to execute an amendment to the service agreement with New City America and increasing the compensation by $67,500. Mr. Meisner?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, Council. Brad Meisner, Community Development Director. So the next item, item 10 before you this evening, is a recommendation from staff which would authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with New City America, which would increase their funding and also extend the term of the contract to December 31, 2019. That's our formal recommendation this evening, but we have some background information to give to you. We also have our consultant here this evening to provide an update to council. So with that said, our objectives tonight really are to provide a progress report on the downtown improvement district that's been, the work that's been ongoing. So we've been seeking to create a business improvement district for the downtown that has a lot of exciting possibilities associated with it, talk about the work that's gone on to date, offer an opportunity for council to ask questions, talk a little bit about the next steps in the timeframe. So, you know, why would we do a downtown improvement district? I think that's one of the questions that comes up. Back in May of 2018, this was a council priority that was indicated that we really do want to work and look at our downtown and really want to create a much more vibrant, walkable downtown. So back in September of 2018, we did, council did authorize a professional services agreement with New City America to undertake that work. Back in February 28th, we actually went to the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee and provided them with an update as well. And that was received very favorably about the efforts that have been ongoing. And of course, here we are this evening to talk to you further. So what would a downtown improvement district do? Well, first of all, it would provide a much-needed funding mechanism to allow for beautification of the downtown, to look at certain improvements, like facade improvements, streetscape, branding of the downtown, all of those dollars that would go into an improvement district would have to be reinvested back within that district. So you would see very tangible benefit if a district were to be approved. It would pay for options such as things like cleaning and beautification, potential parking solutions in the downtown, marketing and promotion, district identity, and then also public space development. Again, as I said, our recommendation this evening is authorize the amendment of the contract. We do have Marco Lamandri here this evening to provide some more information for council. And then of course, staff, so your answer to the questions.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here more or less to give you an update on where we're at right now. One of the issues that is pretty common in cities all throughout the country is that usually business owners or merchants have been organized with chambers of commerce, or merchants associations, or main street associations. But rarely are property owners organized. And this is a property-based assessment district that's being proposed. And there are, you know, my experience in doing this is that you need three things and three and a half, actually. First, you need an identifiable place, and you have one. It's downtown Millbury. Where, what comes to someone's mind when you say downtown Millbury? What does it mean? What's the definition of it? And as someone who's worked really throughout the state of California, I've never really been in Millbury before last fall. And then the more I talk to Tom and the more I realize this place has unbelievable assets. And you have to really weigh a city and its downtown as to what are its assets and what are its liabilities. I mean, from a location standpoint, you're like ground zero for transportation in all of Northern California. In terms of BART meeting Caltrain, seventh-largest international airport in the world with SFO between 101 and the 280 and Wells 380 and the 92, which really hooks you up to East Bay. So, and you're in one of the fastest-growing economies in the world, which is the Peninsula. So where does that put downtown Millbury? And it puts you in really a strategic location to really grow. But my experience has been that you can't grow unless you get the property owners together. So the first thing is the place. The second is that you need an independent funding mechanism in order for property owners to work together with business owners in order to take your downtown to the next level. If you don't, then it's always the tin cup proposal where people are going out with the tin cup and say, we're going to do this event, can you contribute? That gets really old. People have very little time these days. A lot of property owners are not onsite. The merchants are onsite and they're just trying to make a living. So the financing mechanism, an independent financing mechanism is really key. Third point is you need a real entrepreneurial district management corporation. So once you have the revenue and you have the place, how do you run the thing? How do you manage the thing? How do you deal with parking? How do you deal with branding? So when someone says downtown Millbury, a good image comes in their mind and they say, I want to go there instead of going to Berlingame or Redwood City or other places in the Peninsula. How do you attract the type of disposable income that you really want? And you have a lot of huge opportunities on El Camino for redevelopment. We know well that the PUC is a huge property owner here, public entity in San Francisco. We also know that BART is not going to be, property for BART is not going to stay the way it is right now. It's going to be completely different in five to 10 years. It's a very walkable community, has a great microclimate. So all these things add in together to make this thing really strategic. And I think it really allows the property owners, if they have a budget, to take this again to the next level. The fourth thing that you really need is politics and timing. And I think the politics are in Millbury today that people, I think the city council, city manager, staff wants to see this thing happen. It might not have been able to happen two years ago. It might not happen in two to three years. But the timing seems right, at least. And in our experience in doing this since last November, we've sent out a survey, talked to a number of property owners. Many property owners didn't respond because they didn't know what it was or who was doing this thing in the first place. And why would we want to know? Are they satisfied with the condition of downtown at this point? So we did get some initial feedback, but the more Tom and I, Brad, and Lisa would talk to people, the more they said, yeah, I get that. And if everybody contributes, then it allows you to create a budget in which you can make a difference into downtown. It's easy for someone like me to create a district that is going to generate only a little bit of revenue, but then you're not going to make the change that you really need. You need to have enough revenue to make a change into the downtown. So the more we spoke to people, the more they understood it. The stage that we're in now, we still have to talk to a lot of people. Tom and I are going up to San Francisco tomorrow to talk to the PUC to make sure that they understand this. San Francisco has always been very supportive of these districts. Why would they not be supportive of the district here in downtown Millbury when they do that in San Francisco? Met with Baron Soon and his organization. And I learned that, you know, you need to talk about not just doing traditional Chinese, but also simple Chinese. And so we've taken our survey and it's been translated into simple Chinese. We'll be meeting with Baron's group and talking about what the whole point of the district is. In looking at this too, I realize that we need a lot more explanation. So that's why I suggested to the city manager, we're not going to get this within the timeline we anticipated just because there's so much more groundwork that I think me or city manager staff anticipated. So we're asking for an extension to the end of December. If we don't think that this thing's going to happen, we'll definitely come back and say, look, there's not the support. But there's a lot of major players here. And I think there's a lot of willingness on the part of people, particularly people that are going to do some new development and merchants that do want to see more people walking in their front door, to see this thing happen. So we've engaged with a number of people and a number of the larger property owners. And now we want to make sure that everybody understands what's going on. So we requested the extension of time in order to try to figure this out by the end of the calendar year. Again, we'll know one way or another by July or August if this thing has legs and we can report back to you. Reported twice to the Economic Vitality Committee to make sure that they were on board and they understood what was going on. We've had some really good conversation and I think that, and you could probably say, people understood what was going on and they got it. And so we, our response has been very positive, but we just need to do a lot more talking. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And I'd like to answer any questions that I can to the mayor's city manager.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know, the outreach is an ongoing process. And, you know, it's taken some time for some folks to really understand what exactly is being proposed here. So are you proposing an additional follow-up survey at some point to gauge interest?
Well, I want to document everything. So every time we meet with somebody, whether they need it in Chinese or they need it in English, we'll say, here's the survey. It's great you're saying that, will you please fill it out? Because I want to be able to document what they say. And we also need to know what they think their priorities are. Do they think that downtown is dirty and in need of cleaning? Or do they think, most people are saying, no, it's marketing promotion, it's branding. That's what we really need to do. So that's what we're seeing more than anything at this point. So the survey is really important, but it, we're realizing that we have to hand them the survey rather than just mail it to them.
Okay, Councilwoman Oliva?
Marco, how many actual businesses have been contacted?
Well, it's the property owners that were contacted.
Excuse me, property owners.
So I, my staff was supposed to give me the exact numbers, but it's basically from, on El Camino goes from San Juan to the Berlingame border. And so some have very large parcels and some have very, very small parcels. It's probably in the neighborhood of about 150 or 160 parcel owners. Remember, some parcel owners, some parcels are owned by one property owner, so they might own multiple parcels.
So I think that's a question for council, too. We need to be specific on what we call our downtown because that will play into what property owners would participate in this.
Correct.
Yes, and I think that might come up with our goal setting. I brought that up again, I'm sorry. But that might be very important in spending money on a survey that, or extending the time limit here on, when we haven't really identified what we want specifically to be called our downtown and who he needs to contact and survey to.
Well, it's pretty broad at this point, it sounds like.
Exactly.
It is, we're covering a very wide net at this point. And the survey results will tell us, for example, is it stopped at the PUC? If the PUC is not supportive? Or if we get the PUC on board, then they have enough weight to carry us to the north and south of the PUC. We still don't have definition on that.
And one other comment, please?
Yes.
If, if, when we call majority are on board, I want to be specific to that, too, because you made the comment that some of them, some property owners... because you made the comment that some of them, some property owners own more than one or two parcels. So we have to be specific to the boundaries because the majority could be five owners as well as 40 owners. We don't, we don't know what exactly we're speaking about.
That's correct. So under Proposition 218, which is in the state constitution, a property assessment district is defined as determined by a weighted vote of the property owners. So if you're paying a thousand dollars in the district and I'm paying 2,000, under this scenario, I get twice the vote that you do. That's the way Prop 218 is written up and that's the way it's interpreted state law.
And that is a proposition that we might want to change in the near future. Is that correct?
No, the Streets and Highway Code was something we were discussing. Proposition 218 is in the state constitution. We're running under the Streets and Highway Code.
Okay, so if the majority of the owners, if we are specific, could be a lot less than the whole plan itself. I mean, if we have 40 owners, how, I don't have a clue how many old property owners we have when we talk from the north to the south.
Yeah, it's well over 100. That's what we sent out the surveys. But the way these districts are is they're determined by the weighted vote of property owners. So it's very important that we speak to the largest property owners so they know what's going on.
And when you and Tom have, excuse me, city manager have gone out, have you started from the largest property owner, uh, largest-owned parcels, property owners to the smallest? Or how did you begin the?
At this point, like there's a hotel owner that is south of Millbury Avenue who's a significant, not a large owner, but a significant force in the hotel industry. And one thing that he and his wife are willing to do is put us together with a room with all the hotels. So there could be smaller owners that have a good network among all sorts of other owners. It could be a small restaurant that knows a whole bunch of different restaurants. So that's where it's trying to still feel our way through at this point.
So what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is for the audience, is it better to start with the smallers? The group to gain force or is it, I don't, it's bad. That's what I'm saying. So we, we don't, we have to define that as a council. We have to define what our downtown is so that we can.
I, I think you're getting ahead of the game here. The process is to get as much input and feeling for where it may be successful. So you throw the net large and then you can bring it back after they've talked to, like they've started with the bigger ones because they would have more influence. And then they're working their way through. So we're getting way ahead of the game here in really establishing where you want to define the boundaries.
Well, Councilmember Papin, I don't know if I'm so much ahead of the game because this has been presented to economic development a couple of times now. So I think that that would be our direction. So I'm not trying to get ahead of it. I'm just trying to move it.
Well, I think what we're asking for here is an extension of time.
Right.
And I'm exceptionally pleased just in how Marco describes the city. Someone who has just come in and envisioned how great this city can be and the opportunity and potential. I mean, we've had developers coming in here that are just like, "Yeah, you're the same old transit-oriented development and nothing's going to work." So the magical words that you use, I think many of us have a great vision for the future of Millbury and are excited about this opportunity. So I would be definitely for exploring, continuing to add to the contract to see where we can end up.
Okay. Councilman Schneider?
I'm also in favor of giving you more time and a little bit more money. I have a couple of questions though. One of the preliminary things I heard was that even if this went forward, we're looking many years down the road before we look at how parking is used on Broadway and the width of our sidewalks. So I was a little disappointed to hear that. And then I was a little disappointed to hear that you say that most of your people who responded back saying they want help with marketing promotion and not cleanliness. Because if we talk to our residents, I know they don't vote for this, but cleanliness is a big issue. How do you try to balance that? You're getting message from merchants. We have a heck of a lot of empty storefronts which contribute to how doughty it looks downtown. Sorry, Tom. But wait, Tom was here. He's loved. So how do you, how do you balance that out?
So it's, everything's relative, right? So when I walk down Broadway or I walk down El Camino, I say it's relatively clean. I mean, I do a lot of work in San Francisco. This is only an $11 billion city. But it's, you have a lot more going for you in terms of safe and clean public rights of way than a lot of other cities that I work in, Oakland, et cetera. So I would say that that is not the major problem. I don't see graffiti all over the place. I do see vacancies, but vacancies are really based upon demand. People are going to go wherever they think the hot place is. I mean, I did the district in Redwood City four to five years ago and Redwood City was nowhere near four years ago where it is today. A lot of that has to do with they have a significant marketing budget. They don't put that much into cleaning. They have a Caltrain station and they have a critical mass of retail. And it's very, very walkable. So I think that as soon as you have the money to start creating the demand and as soon as some of these new developments come forward, which are anticipated and being reviewed by the city council, I think that when you have people living here and they're living here full-time, they're going to be walking and creating demand. And you have a state-of-the-art Safeway. And there's a lot of old Safeways that are pretty, that need a lot of improvement all throughout the entire Bay Area. You have a state-of-the-art one. Across the street, you have a Trader Joe's. People would die for a Trader Joe's and you already have it here. So I think that I look at all these assets and say, "It's just a question of marketing and promoting the concept of the downtown Millbury and why the assets are important." Purpose of this district is to create demand, not only for the businesses, but for the property owners, for the rents, et cetera. So I don't know if that specifically answers your question, but to me, those are the real primary things. It's really an economic development tool at this point. And it will also, as things get redeveloped, it will throw more money in, which of course, then you're going to have more people walking on the sidewalks, throwing trash on the ground. You're going to need more trash cans. Then you're going to have a thousand dogs living in downtown and you're going to need to deal with that whole element of it. But I think that will evolve and that will be a good evolution.
And then.
We'll just be ticketing for that.
Because you, you brought up the walkability from the Progress Seminar. I've been invited by a company called Palantir who's working with joint venture Silicon Valley. They're working on a pilot in Palo Alto to try to reduce car traffic and increase foot traffic. So I'm not on the Economic Vitality Committee. This is months away and possibly years away. But I'll be looking to try to bring in some of that additional Silicon Valley leadership and maybe potentially Silicon Valley partnerships.
Right, which will be critical. And I was on the Leadership Council of the Project for Public Spaces. So I completely get this whole concept of place making. It's always a very important part, particularly in cities in the 21st century where people, you have a great microclimate. People can walk here, you know, 340 days a year if it's not raining and just sit down. You need more seating areas outside. You need more outdoor dining going on. And Broadway is already an intimate street that would allow for that. And people might complain about parking, but parking is a manageable thing. So I think that there's other models you can look at. And eventually, you know, people are going to be Ubering a lot and they're going to be living here and walking to restaurants and walking to retail.
Thank you.
Mayor Lee, any comments, questions?
Yeah. My comment is that the point is, is that, you know, our downtown, is it the cleanest? Maybe not. Is it clean during most places? Probably. But the bottom line is if we do want to improve downtown, want to make it cleaner, safer, more appealing, we need to have money. And so this is like a chicken and egg thing. So do we just, you know, put more money into cleaning downtown? Or we put, invest it into downtown and hopefully raise, have downtown make enough money to pay for itself and pay for the extra services to keep it, make it nicer, cleaner, more, more livable and walkable.
I move approval. I'm moved.
Okay. Any final comments, questions? No? Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Papin. Do we have a second? Voice, uh, second from Councilwoman Oliva. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item 10 passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lamandri. Look forward to continuing to work with you. Next, we'll do item eight, Vallejo. Okay, so next is a public hearing for item number eight, 210 Vallejo Drive. Appeal of a planning commission decision to approve the design review permit to allow the construction of a new two-story residence located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. We have a presentation. Yes, Mr. Meisner?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
So the next item this evening is to discuss an appeal of the planning commission decision to approve the construction of a new house at 210 Vallejo Drive. This is a site that is about 72,000, 7,200 square feet in size. It's within the R1 zoning district. And what is proposed is a brand-new house, the demolition of an existing house. When it went to planning commission, there were a number of concerns that were brought up about privacy, about views to the east to the bay, about the neighborhood character. And staff had worked with the applicant very early on in the process prior to it going to planning commission. The house originally was proposed at about 28 feet 6 inches in height. Staff worked with them to alter that pitched roof design. It's now in a flat roof design at 21 feet 8 inches, which is approximately two feet higher than what the existing home is, which is also underneath the height limit for a flat roof at 25 feet. And so with that, that's a brief introduction. I'll get into some of the more specifics. Here you can see a site plan and location map of the proposed, of the property located at the corner of Vallejo Drive and Canejo Drive. And so it's, it's east of a number of condominium buildings that are up further up the hill to Vallejo Court. Just in terms of the background, the plans were submitted back in last year. As I mentioned, staff worked with the applicant on variations of the design and went to planning commission. Neighbors in the condominiums to the west feel that they're being negatively impacted because of the views that could be lost to the, to the bay. There are concerns about just that, the overall design of the home. And with that, the appeal was made and so that's why we're here this evening. I did want to also mention that in addition to me, I still have our, our lead planner here, Sam Fielding, who's our senior planner, who is here to answer questions as well. The existing house that's located there is about a 30, a little over 2,000 square feet. The new home would have a lot coverage that would be less in footprint than what is existing. But the overall floor-to-air ratio would be much higher than the existing home by virtue of the fact that we're going from a one-story to a two-story house, as was proposed. I talked a little bit about the appellant's concerns. Because of those concerns, staff did ask for story poles to be put up to try to mimic what the new house would look like to try to understand some of those, those view concerns. And I'll get to that. I want to show a few of those photographs. You can, you can see here, specifically on the photograph on the upper right, you can see where the story poles were put up to sort of mimic where the new second-story addition would be. You can see that in the top photo to the left as well. The bottom two photographs are from staff that went up the hillside to where the flat portion of the grade change is to take photographs looking eastward off to the bay. Now, there are a number of properties to the west along the condominium that would have vantage points to the east. This is sort of just directly looking straight across the street. Moving back, the proposed home would be entirely compliant with all the R1 zoning standards, although it would be two feet higher than what is on the lot currently. Again, as I mentioned, the house is proposed as more of a contemporary style with a flat roof. There are a couple homes further to the south that have somewhat of a similar design in terms of it being a flat roof. But I would say that the majority of the homes in the area are, majority are one-story, sort of with that pitched roof design. The, the new home would be, would be sizable with dining room, two-car garage, rec room, master bedroom on the ground floor. On the upper floor would be a family room and three additional bedrooms, which you can see from this plan here. This is the proposed second-floor plan. The home has been pulled in from the side property lines. So it is trying to be as centrally located within the middle part of the home as it, as it can. And also it's pulled back from the edge of the house, the requisite 10 feet from the edges. This, this plan here shows some of the landscaping that would be proposed as well as a rear, rear patio that is desired by the, by the homeowner. In this image, what this is meant to illustrate is on the far left, what the existing home looks like now to the way in which it was proposed with the pitched roof. And then to the far right, you can see the revised design that staff worked with the applicant prior to the planning commission that resulted in the, in the flat roof design. So again, it is 21 feet, about 8 inches, just about two feet higher than the previous or the existing home and below the 20-foot, the 25-foot height limitation for a flat roof in the R1 district. The other thing of note that the applicant did to address some of the privacy concerns was eliminated some of the window sizing on the front elevation facing Vallejo Drive. And so that was in an attempt to try to get at some of the privacy concerns that some of the neighbors to the west have. This is just another series of elevations illustrating the same points I just made. This is an interesting diagram here. This is meant to show somewhere that grade change from the condominiums to the west. And what it's trying to illustrate is that from that second-floor balcony of the condominiums, what that view shed would look like looking to the east. And so this is indicating that that view would essentially be looking sort of somewhat over the top.
I'm sorry, can you, remind me, the top floor is one unit, the bottom floor are separately different homes. So we're really mixing apples and oranges here. I actually found this slide very insulting, like I was stupid.
Okay, well, I, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that the top floor are separate homes with the ground floor being separate homes. I understand. And so again, back to the pole, story poles. These are the renderings of the proposed home. As I indicated before, it is contemporary nature. Again, this is a design review permit that's before you. We've been speaking over the last number of weeks. And so you have the findings that would be necessary to support a design review permit, one way or the other. And here are those findings again. And so with that, staff is recommending that council approve the proposed new house design, deny the appeal and approve the design review permit. Of course, the matter is de novo before the council. So, and staff is here to answer any questions that you have about the process and/or the project. We also have the project applicant here to present as well as the appellant.
Okay, should we go first with the applicant and then the appellant to give a presentation? Do you want to? Okay. Open the public hearing? Yeah, can we have a, do we need a motion and a vote for that? Just. Okay. Motion from Councilman Schneider. Do we have a second to open the public hearing? Second from Councilman Oliva. Can we do a roll call vote to open the public hearing?
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva? Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
I didn't hear what the vote for.
To open the public hearing?
Yes.
The motion to open the public hearing passed unanimously.
Okay, can we have the applicant, please?
I have some handouts that I'd like to hand out, please. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you this evening.
Sorry, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, can you hear me now? Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, vice mayor, council members, my name is Toran Noor, project architect. Thank you for being here tonight. Appeals are not always easy. We have a full house tonight. And so what I'd like to do is kind of go through a little bit about our process and how we got to where we are tonight. First, I'd like to introduce my client, Kevin, and his wife Elaine Chan. Maybe I'll just have Kevin just give a quick little word, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lee. Good evening, city councils. My name is Kevin Chan. I'm living in Millbrae, has been over twenty years. I like a community here, good school district, and close to the airport. So I built this project for my retirement home. I will live here for the rest of life. I hope you can support my project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Mr. Meisner for an excellent review of the project. I think I'm not going to dwell in too much of what he's already presented tonight, but what I would like to do is just talk a little bit about our process and kind of maybe how we can move forward. We started this project quite a while ago, and when I originally did the design with my client, we were working within the constraints of all your design guidelines. We made the presentation to staff, to Sam. We got a letter of approval. We noticed four neighbors. One of them was on Vallejo Court, which was, we were required only to notice one neighbor, and then the other adjacent neighbors. All the adjacent neighbors to the actual property approved it. The one neighbor on Vallejo Court did not approve it. Shortly after that, Sam gave me a call, said all of the neighbors, I shouldn't say "all" because I don't know "all," but they felt that the higher roof, the design, was really blocking their view, and that they were going to object to the project. And Sam suggested, what would be a good -- what can we do to solve this? I went to my client, and I said, you know, Kevin, the best way to handle this is we do a complete redesign. What did that mean? More time, more money. He was losing money for rent because the tenants moved out, and he had my time and our fees. When we redesigned it, we went to a little more of a contemporary design that represented maybe what you might call mid-century modern architecture. And then basically, we went through a whole process of review, went to the planning commission, et cetera. It was approved by the planning commission, and we're now at a point where the project has been appealed, and by a lot of the neighbors. I'd probably say all of them. I don't know if all of them were, but I looked at the appeal letters. I didn't see every address, but, you know, we can say a majority. The one element that I'd like to talk a little bit about was the roof lines. By creating a flat, more contemporary house, something that might be kind of what you might look at as an aquar house, something that you can kind of make, you know, some sort of, you know, connection to. This site plan, or it's kind of a view diagram which you have, basically represents the five condominium units and their proximity to our project. There's units on the north and south that are approximately 300 feet away from our subject property, and the two adjacent to that are 240, and the one in the middle, which is unit number three, which is the unit that we actually were required to notice. That property owner is a trustee, and it's all rented out. They're not -- the property owner does not live at that property. And I apologize to council member about the gross negligence maybe that we presented in this. I take responsibility for that. What is key to the handout that I just gave you, that has not been discussed, is really how the massing works. And if you look at the building on the left, you have shaded portions in that dark red, which actually represents an area of the existing roof that will be removed. Those two wings on the north and south of the new proposed house basically represents the existing roof that will now be opened up as a view corridor. Now, we're looking at this building straight on. Some of the houses will benefit more from this, specifically the number one, number three unit in the middle. And the ones on the further south, as you get a perspective, it changes a little bit, but still there's more open space that we've created. Now, when you look at that specific plan on the left, and you look at the area of the roof that we're adding, two feet times 38 feet in width, and then you take the area of those two wings, we've actually reduced the overall mass of that front by about, I think, sixty feet. Now, if you look at our original plan, which would be the one on the right, you see the roof area is much larger. The smaller wings are less, and so the delta is actually, there's more roof area that would have been on that project. So we feel that when you talk about significant impact, and that I think is the key to this project of appeal, because in our planning commission hearing, it was really about the view. And the obstruction that these homeowners are going to lose, significant views to the bay, not just the bay, but maybe the airport mount at San Bruno Mountain, and going down towards the bridge. They all have shared different views, and I have to tell you, there's some of the best views in Millbrae. Who wouldn't want to live there, you know? But actually, my homeowner, my client, has this home that he, too, wants to be able to take advantage of the opportunity that is allowed by him, by your code, to develop this project. And so there is no denial that you can't own -- you can't own a view. Now, certainly in your design guidelines, when you read the design guidelines, the definition of view is one sentence in your design guidelines. It basically says, "Try to mitigate significant impacts of the view," and basically that's it. Now, I feel honestly that our original design worked within that. We went back and spent almost six months, five months redesigning to what I feel really represented a true honest effort on our part. As an architect, I wanted to make this work. And my client compromised quite a bit through my suggestions to do this. And I was really hoping that this wouldn't break apart the community of Millbrae. You know, Millbrae is made up of a fantastic community, and I hope at the end of this evening, we don't still have a divided house. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And I would also like to reserve some time after the appellant's make their comments to come back to you with some suggestions based on what has come through tonight. So once again, I want to thank you for your time. An appeal is not the best way for us to meet tonight, but unfortunately, that's the process. So anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I'd be willing to grant you that, but I would like to grant the appellant an opportunity to respond to your response as well.
I would actually welcome that.
Okay. Okay. Can we have -- well, first of all, are any questions from the council, or should we want to go to the appellant's?
I can hear from both.
Yes, Councilman Schneider.
So the original house that's going to be torn down is how many square feet? Because I couldn't find it in the documents. I probably missed it. There were a lot of documents. And then what is the new square footage?
It's within 60 square feet. I apologize, I don't have--
No, no, no. You mean the new -- the new house is 60 square feet greater than the one being torn down?
I think the FAR were -- I apologize, I don't have my--
I think the existing floor is a little over 2,000. It's 2,015 square feet, the existing home.
The original or the new?
The existing home, okay.
Yeah, the existing.
The new home is 2,097 on the first floor, 1,252 on the second floor. Both have a garage of about 460 feet.
1,252. So we're looking at something that is a third-plus bigger.
Correct.
And Millbrae, city manager, correct me, we -- Millbrae has never looked at any of the monster horn activities that have happened up and down the peninsula?
No, we have not. But I think, just to bring to your attention here, the FAR under our municipal code is .5555 percent, and that would be 3,989 square feet. So their proposal is 3,816 feet, and that is within the .55 FAR.
I'm sorry, could you -- I write a little slower right now? What were the two numbers you just gave?
Here.
So the maximum FAR under this zone is 55 percent. So that would allow a 3,989-square-foot home. They're proposing a 3,816-square-foot home.
Thank you.
So this is where I missed it, right on the front page?
Right on the front.
Thank you.
Okay. Shall we go have the appellant's give a presentation? Is that Mr. Poon, or is there somebody representing the appellant's to present?
Sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
You need to go to the--
Yeah, I know there are several speaker slips here. I was wondering if there was somebody would like to give a direct presentation, just kind of summarizing, as opposed to just individual public comment.
Yeah, the person that paid the fee would be the appropriate person.
Do you have a name of the person that paid the fee?
I believe it was Michael Poon, is that correct?
That's him.
That is correct.
Yes, that's him.
Which one is the one you're using? This one? Just this one?
Come on in.
I need a copy of it. I have some stuff. For this floor. Objectively, I have to.
Yes, we're waiting.
Okay, thought maybe I got dropped off.
Nope.
Why don't I try to send this to the mayor?
I'm going to start passing this out, okay? All right. Actually, there's only one.
Who else to meet?
Thank you. Want to just give a quick control?
We're slow.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. So just introduce the--
Yeah. My name is Michael Poon. I'm living at 215 Vallejo Court, and I'm the appellant on the 210 Vallejo Drive project. We, instead of like having all our neighbors like taking turns to talk about the same subject, we are having four speakers, and we just go by like three minutes each and then to have our presentation. And I would like to start with Stephanie here.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
The appellant's are giving a presentation at this time, and they have a few speakers on behalf of the Vallejo Court residents. Okay, yes? And if you could identify yourself as you speak, that'd be great.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Taylor. I live at 281 Vallejo Court. And Vallejo Court is home to over 40 people in 20 condominiums. As I speak on behalf of my Vallejo Court neighbors, please know how appreciative we are of your interest in this matter. That is critically important to us. We are seriously concerned about the city's decision to support 210 Vallejo Drive's design review permit. We support property owners' right to make improvements to their property. However, these improvements should not place other property owners in a position of disadvantage. Viable solutions do exist. We believe that the information that city staff and the planning commission relied on to support the project was incomplete and inaccurate. My neighbor, Michael Poon, who will be speaking next, illuminated several areas in which measurement and comparison information that is presented as factual is actually inaccurate and misleading. For example, incongruent and misleading measurements and counts. On two different pages, the condominium development is noted, and one instance is being 30 feet above Vallejo Drive. On another page, it's noted as being 20 feet above Vallejo Drive. Regarding the roof height being lowered to seven feet 10 and a half inches, when you actually calculate 28 feet six and a half inches to the amended height of 21 feet eight inches, this is a six-foot and 10 and a half-inch difference. So again, those calculations are incorrect. Letters were received noting residents who support and oppose the project. Eleven letters were received from Vallejo Court residents who oppose the project's current design. Seventeen letters were received in support. However, only three of the 17 residences were adjacent to 210 Vallejo Drive. Of the remaining 14 residents acknowledging support, the closest one lives a half-mile away, the furthest, a mile and a half. Yes, they're Millbrae residents, but they are not in our neighborhood. These errors and reaches all favor the applicant, and obviously, obtaining accurate and relevant measurements is very important to displaying visual impairment graphics accurately. Second of all, neighborhood character. So 210 Vallejo Drive is proposed to be a two-story flat roof design, which the applicant notes is compatible and similar to the residences in the neighborhood. In the report, it's noted specifically there are three homes located on Vallejo Drive, 300, 304, and 308. This is misleading. Those three homes are actually six homes. So 300 and 302 are multifamily residences. 304, 306 are multifamily, so forth, and so on. So it's inaccurate to compare single-family residents to multifamily residences. 210 Vallejo Drive is on the 200 block. The homes that they're saying are the most compatible are on the 300 block. And the homes on the 200 block are single-story. Furthermore, on page three of the report notes that property owners from three two-story condos expressed concerns. This sounds misleading as well. The correct number, there's twenty two-story condos on Vallejo Court. So if the applicant is so confident, confident that the impact is insignificant, why provide inaccurate information? The answer is because impact is significant. And Michael Poon is going to elaborate on the significance issues. Furthermore, we were asked if we could make concessions and, or offer counter-solutions, and that the applicant made major genuine effort concessions. Changing a single-family residence to a two-story residence with a higher roof is a significant change. When you consider that there are two residents who are going to live at two-ten Vallejo Drive, and compare that to forty residents on Vallejo Court, that's significant. My neighbor, John Stanish, is going to talk a little bit more about the issues with concessions. So thank you again for your interest and time dedicated, dedicated to gathering as much relevant, balanced, and complete information as possible. Your consideration of our concerns and counter-solutions are very much appreciated. And again, thank you for visiting Vallejo Court.
Okay, I want to go through these drawings and photos with you. Apologize to the audience that, who don't have a copy. As you can see, the files is not working, so please spare me. So on, on the first page, it shows that there are three homes between, on Vallejo Drive, between Madera Way and Canejo Drive. Like that consists, that's basically the block two-hundred of Vallejo Drive. And on Madera Way, there are thirteen single-family residents, single-story with a pitch roof. Same for the three homes on block two-hundred of Vallejo Drive, they are single-story with a pitch roof. There are fifteen homes on Canejo Drive, and only two of those are two stories. The other thirteen are single-story with pitch roofs. The three, the three buildings at the corner of Vallejo Drive and Canejo Drive, on the south side, those are multifamily residents, and those are two-story buildings with a, with a flat roof. So as you can see on this drawing, first page of the drawings, we are on the other side of two-ten Vallejo Drive, and there are, there are five buildings, and each building consists of four units, a total of twenty units across the street. Okay, if you go to the next page, that has a panoramic view from my patio door. So that's basically how the neighborhood looks like. So next picture, you see three homes, the block two-hundred of Vallejo Drive, and the three multifamily residents. So as you can see, that's, the roof lines are consistent throughout. Like you can almost like draw a straight line, and it will hit, hit the top of the roof of each single building. And I also put a picture of the new proposed building. And as you can see, those, that one is not consistent with the neighboring properties. Like, so from, the planning commission, they, the, the approval of the project would be based on the four findings. And one of the findings is the building needs, the structure needs to be consistent or compatible with the neighborhood. However, in this, in the staff report, it mentioned it was comparing this new building with the two-story multifamily residence with a flat roof. And to us, it's not that compatible at all. While those three buildings is almost like, based on my knowledge, they are the, they are a unique development within the entire Musa State neighborhood. So while comparing one of a kind building claiming is compatible while forgetting the rest, is, is really amazing. Our next picture is looking from, on Vallejo Drive to the north. Same thing, like if you look, look at the roof, look at roof lines, they, it's, it's, you can see it just, just one line. So next picture has the proposed roof. Approximately, I, I try my best to, to shade it, how it would look like. And the next picture is looking to the north. Same thing, I tried, I put the, the proposed new roof on the drawing. Well, one of the things we, we concern is even though this, this proposed second story, they are raising, claiming raising two feet, with a, with a flat roof, it's highly likely that sooner or later, there'll be solar panels on top of it. And those will be at least two to three feet tall. So the next two pictures shows some solar panels. They, they, this, this house has two rows of solar panel, basically like going across the entire roof. And then the next photo, it shows, it shows the, what, like how the house would look like with the, with those solar panels. Same thing on the next picture. Yeah, and, okay, going to the next picture with all three buildings on block two-hundred Vallejo Court, raising one story. That's how it would look like. I know that we're only focusing on one project, but we all understand that, like, if this project is approved, it will set a precedent to the entire neighborhood for getting a second story. So this picture has a blue as the new roof, and a green as the new solar panels. So as you can see on, on these pictures, like the, the other finding that the commissioner, planning commissioner should be, should be reviewed, to evaluate, the proposed project would be based on the view obstruction. And for view obstructions, it would be based on whoever, like from, from their home has a view to it. Like, we, like the twenty units on Vallejo Court, they are very much, they, they basically are the only twenty residents that has a view that look, look through this proposed project. Like no one else really will, from other homes will, will look at it. I, I don't know. But, um, so we all think it is significant to us. And other people who, who are from other different neighborhoods, like half a mile away, couple miles away, they, I don't think, well, a lot of them, they cannot even see us or see this project. I really don't understand, like, yeah, it definitely won't have a view impact to them. So next picture is, is inside, is a view from the inside of my neighbor Sonia, who's, lives on the lower floor. And, yeah, that's, so as you can see the story posts, see how, how we will block the bay and the mountain on the East Bay. So next picture has a, has a red block. That's the obstruction by the project. And next picture with the green, there's a solar panel. Yeah, a moment, yeah, this is, this almost, yeah, this, this blocked everything. This, yeah, from, from having a bay view and a mountain view is, is, is all gone, and they're only looking at the sky. Next picture is from my neighbor downstairs, and pretty much the same thing. Like they, right now, they can have a view of the San Mateo Bridge high-rise, with the new, new project is gone. So that, yeah, one, one more thing I want to bring up is that, like, right now, I'm, I'm a little bit confused with, with the proposed building height. Because at one point, I thought from, from the planning commission meeting, we were told that it was rise, or one of the drawings shows it, it is nineteen inches higher than existing. So I think, and some, some neighbor heard it twen, uh, two feet. And when I read the, the staff report for today's meeting, it shows two feet, seven inches. And, um, from, from the architect's drawing that I, that we just saw, that's page A four-point-two. If you, um, if you look at that from the architect's package, drawing A four-point-two, it shows the mass impact or mass of the building. Like, it's, it's fascinating to me that it only shows like, something like six inches above, higher than the existing building. Do you see that? Yeah, I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure in my, I-
Well, we don't have A four-point-two.
It's, it's the handout that the applicant submitted?
Yes, sorry.
Right. So, do, do you see that? It shows a very minimal rise from the existing building, uh, roof line. Okay, I'll, I'll pass it to John.
Hello, my, my name is Hank Sauer, and I'm at two-oh-seven Vallejo Court. I've been asked by the Vallejo Court homeowners to address the qualitative issues of this project. And I'd like to do that by relating just a short story to you. After the passing of my mother, in nineteen seventy-nine, my father decided to downsize from his home, which was a smart move, and he decided to look for condos. I was in the real estate business, so I went out looking at different units. And back in those days, they didn't build condos like they do right now. They were a lot different. And I looked and looked and looked until I found the Vallejo Court unit. I took my father up there, and he walked around like anybody would do, looking at the kitchen, the bathroom, floor plan. And then he stood in front of the window. He stood there for probably thirty seconds without saying anything. And finally, without looking at me, he said, "Son, we live in one of the most beautiful places on earth, and I can see most of it from here. This is it." And he bought it. And whenever I stand in front of that window myself, I can hear his words, and I feel the same way. And I know that all my neighbors on Vallejo Court also feel the same way. It's important to us. And I know some of you have been up there, and have seen the units and seen the view, and I'm hoping that you looked at that view the same way we do. It's a quality of life issue, okay? This is not a NEMBI problem, and I know you've heard from many people around here in support of the project, but I don't think you've heard of anybody that is actually going to be affected by the project support it. So we are hoping that you will see the importance of this issue that, you know, to us, the, the homeowners on Vallejo Court.
Good evening. I'm John Stanish. I live at two-eighty-five Vallejo Court. I read the staff report to the commission. It describes the applicant's diligent efforts, their concessions, addressing our concerns, and a harmonious and benign outcome with a lot of support. It just didn't seem balanced. Now, to be fair, I understand the staff weren't allowed to come to our properties. So maybe that's partly to blame. So thank you all for your visits. But make no mistake, this doesn't address our concerns. It's bad for Vallejo Court. It clearly impairs views. If it impairs views, it impairs values. And this is anything but harmonious. The three homes on the two-hundred block are really close together. They have to be harmonious. The new one is completely different and significantly higher. They compare it to the two-story units across the street. It's higher than those. In fact, this will be the highest structure for hundreds of feet along Vallejo Drive. And if they put something on that roof, like solar panels, add a few more feet, it's not harmonious. It's disruptive. And the support isn't genuine. Only four of the seventeen supporters can actually see the property. On average, the rest are nearly a mile away. What is their interest? And finally, approval will set a precedent, and we'll have no recourse against anyone who wants to do the same. We all want to improve our property. But what if it hurts more people than it helps? Isn't that the case here? Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Now, I believe the applicant would like to have a, a comment on that, and then I'll let you all have a comment on the applicant's comment.
Rebuttal.
A rebuttal to the rebuttal. And from the podium, please.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I would just like to say for the record that staff did go up to the property, and they are allowed to go on the property with the property owner's permission. So several staff members did go up and, and see the property.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Schneider?
Was that before or after the planning commission approval?
I don't know if it was before, but I know it was in preparation for this hearing tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mariner says before. Okay, yes?
Just for the record, I think there are some other speakers that would like to speak on this project tonight that have not been spoken here tonight, and I think before I give my comments that they should be heard.
Okay, can we take public comment now?
That are out there.
Okay. And just, I did, each of the four of you who spoke from Vallejo Court, I saw you did fill out speaker slips. I take it as that your comments have been put in. You don't, you don't need an additional public comment, okay? So for those who have not spoken yet, the first one is Dale Hahn.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dale Hahn. I gave you my mailing address there in, in San Mateo. But I'm here tonight because my wife and I are presently in contract to purchase what's been called the number-three building on, on this, on Vallejo Court. It's, it's the middle of the five buildings up there. And as you know, that it is a four-unit building, and our daughters and their families will occupy two of those units. So while I would like to join in the, in the comments that were submitted by the present owner, who was referred to and is the trustee of the trust that, that currently owns that building, it was kind of a suggestion earlier that, well, that's a, it's a rental, and she doesn't live there. Well, two of our daughters and their families will live in that unit, and we feel that we have a, a real stake in this. And I would simply like to join in all the comments that were made- And I would simply like to join in all the comments that were made by the, the other speakers, and, uh, that were submitted in the materials which you've received, which I've reviewed, and I agree in the prin- the principal points. I would, I won't repeat any of their comments except to say that based on my own observations from those units, the visual impact is significant. And we're very concerned when we hear suggestions that, uh, we can sort of see around this, this building. Obviously, if other property owners, um, apply to make similar, uh, changes, I don't see how in the world they could be denied once this has been granted. I kind of see this, um, view up there as, uh, might think of it as an endangered species. Once it's gone, it's gone. Those, once a house is built that intrudes into that view, it'll never be taken down. So I hope you approach your decision, uh, in that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Catherine Zhang, followed by Joe Chen.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor and, uh, city councils. My name is Catherine Zhang, and I live, uh, 200 block Sebastian, it's about half-mile from Vallejo. And I do, I, I actually walk there on that Saturday and take a look how the existing home and the area. And I, I do see some views, but I, the home that I own, I have half that view. So I am supporting the 210, 210 Vallejo, 'cause I believe, uh, we could all share the view instead. Everyone only have the view, but, um, to making the mills, uh, as they, you know, upgrade and I support them in, so we can have a better Millbrae homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next is Joe Chen, followed by Henry Lin.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Honabaugh, council members. My name is Joe Chen, living on Loyola Drive for 20 years. I'm here tonight to support the approval decision allowing the remodeling and addition at 210 Vallejo Drive by the planning commission. Many houses in Millbrae were built in the 50s and 60s. The plumbing and electrical system are outdated and cannot meet the current building code. Not long ago, there was a house fire caused by outdated electrical wiring to my neighbor's home. Remodeling these houses to bring them to the current building standard is beneficial to the safety of the neighborhood and the community. There are some neighbors who expressed their concern about the view will be significantly blocked by this project. As you can see from the architect's presentation, the neighbor's houses are on a much higher elevation, and also is from anywhere from 140 feet to 340 feet away from the subject property. The view cannot be blocked in such a far distance significantly. Actually, newer houses with nice landscaping will beautify the streets and will enhance the view of the neighborhood and increase the property value in a nearby neighborhood. I hope the city councils will approve the decision made by the planning commission to protect the property right of the owner and to encourage property renovation in the city of Millbrae, which is beneficial to cities' income and beautifying the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Henry Lin, followed by Yong Dong Lu.
Henry Lin?
Lin, L-I-N.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Henry. I'm the owner of 206 Vallejo Drive, which is right next to this house project. I'm here to support this project because I agree every owner has their right to develop their own house. This was summarized by the judge in the first hearing, and I believe everyone here will note up on this basic right. Since the argument we're gonna discuss tonight focuses on how we could minimize the negative effect from the addition project, instead of wasting our time again appealing each other. Only by this manner, we can achieve a win-win solution. The first proposal was a pitch roof with a, with hips and a valleys. However, in order to minimize the negative effect to the Vallejo Court residents, this project owner and architect revised the pitch roof to a flat roof. In this way, the project proposal highest, highest point is almost as existing, uh, one-story reach high. With no doubt, house with pitch roof will be more appealing, uh, to the flat-roof house. So here, we can see the sacrifice, uh, the house owner makes. In addition, the elevation of the flat-roof house is still lower than the eye level when the Vallejo Court residents standing on their platform, uh, their balcony. So here, the negative effect from the addition probably will be greatly minimized. So in order to achieve a win-win solution, we can see, uh, the, uh, the effort, uh, the project owner is trying to make. So finally, I know, uh, a sound of the appearance already shown some, uh, pictures, uh, to the council members. But what I want to say here is pictures, pictures could not explain everything correctly. It really depends how you take picture, the angle, the height, we, we never know. So we should, we should judge, uh, we should judge based on the drawings, the engineering drawing. In general, no matter Vallejo Drive or Vallejo Court, we are in a same neighborhood. A neighborhood should have more agreement and understanding. Besides, this project, everything is within the requirement, and we need to see the compromise , uh, the project owner has made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Yong Dong Lu, followed by Freeman Peng.
So, uh, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and, uh, uh, Councilmen. My name is Freeman Peng, and, uh, uh, me and my family living about half-mile away from the project. I'm supporting this project based on the three reasons. One is that, uh, all I hear is that it complying to the city call. Second is that I really appreciate and loving to see some new improvements in the community. The third reason is that if top one and top two can be approved, and I was told also a lot of the similar project is coming to the community. So there's no reason not to approve, uh, this particular single-house project. Talking about the blocking the view by the new development, the top one project has been approved by the city, a line-story buildings. As a matter of fact, this almost completely blocking the view for the residents across the street, yet the city approve it. That means view is not a significant factor on approving new developments in the city of Millbrae. So I support this development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just further, could Yong Dong Lu's not, not here? Okay. Uh, next will be Paul Hong, followed by Alice Kwong.
My name is Paul Hong, and I live at 180 Conejo Drive, which is, uh, right below the, uh, proposed property owner's, uh, project. I had reviewed the, uh, architect's plan and drawings, and it is a beautiful design two-story corner house at 210 Vallejo Street. It complements another two-story corner house across Conejo Drive at 302 Vallejo Street. When the house is built, it will be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. I totally support this project. The neighbor's concern is that, uh, their view is minimally obstructed. I own a home has a beautiful view, however, it is partially blocked by the neighbor's house, uh, below. And I think their objection is not very reasonable. And I sincerely hope that after a fair and careful consideration, you will approve this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, next is Alice Kwong.
Good evening, uh, dear, uh, Mayor Lee, and also Vice Mayor Honabaugh, and, um, council members. I'm Alice Kwong, living in 1085 Clearfield Drive. I've been here since 19, 1998. And also, my house is two-story house, and is close to 3,000 square feet. And, um, also, I have been used to walk from my house to all the, uh, uh, Coseco, and all those house to Joe's house, so it's in walking distance. I fully understand how other residents feelings, is, is why we have these meetings. But feeling is, doesn't mean regulations. So everyone want to apply any plans, have to go to the city planning department to under the guidelines to decide and get approval. There's no one can challenge that and across and overcome without approval under the guidelines. So feeling doesn't mean regulations. I do have a lot of feelings. I do want anything under what my personal feelings, but doesn't mean those feelings can do the right things. And we have to have respect, there's a city's, you know, for the planning requirement. And I also personally, I talk to the architects, and the architect is second generation, and, you know, for the architect professional, and also I personally talk to the owner of those couples. I know why they want to rebuild the house like this way, and they really sincerely to consider all the neighborhoods, whatever their accommodations, that's why I had that long. As earlier, they have been very detailed to explain their plans, and they all consider all your neighborhood's concerns. They do. I spend a lot of time to talk to them, because even though I, my house may be half-minute, half-mile from your house, but we are in the same community. We want to have a very nice, unique community, be all friendship, and we don't want to fight each other. But that's why they made their plans, spent a lot of money. So please also, we will be, you know, somehow, someday, we'll see each other, we'll be just like across the streets, and we would like to compromise all the neighbors' feelings, but we still need to get the community improved. And the view is important for my property, also very important for any others. Thank you. And please, and approve the application, and personally, and me and my family support this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. Um, now, Mr. Noor, did you want to, um, make a rebuttal there?
Uh, yes, thank you. Let, let's talk about views. If I stand here, and I'm looking out my view window, which is, say, that door and that window, the view I have is pretty narrow. And maybe the house across the street picks up a lot of that view. Now, if I walk up to my window, and now I'm in front of my window, and I'm looking at the sunrise, my view is like this. I see from San Bruno Mountain all the way down.
Sorry, sir, you have to speak into the microphone.
Oh, I can see all the way down, uh, the bay. So the views are really subjective. Do I look, are all my views looking 20 feet away out, out of bedroom window, which, by the way, bedroom windows aren't part of the, the view issue, it's all major rooms. But really, you walk up, his father walked up to that window and said, "My God, this is heaven." He lived in probably, that, that unit is one of the prime units. It's at the, for this north, and it has a view that's commanding of the whole airport, San Bruno Mountain, all the way down to the bridge. The, the units down on the, the far south don't have that view. They're looking out at three condominium, or looking out at those, uh, two-story existing units, and a little bit of San Bruno Mountain. Whereas unit number three is probably a little more impacted. Obviously, the lower unit, um, looks directly out to our project. So you really have to look at how views are looked at. And the photographs, and I didn't get an opportunity to look at your photographs, I did see some, but a lot of them don't show standing up to the window and looking at your beautiful So in terms of, talked about continuity of the existing houses on Vallejo, next door to my client, they're all the same height, all vanilla. We're really living in an environment now, today, of diversity. Diversity is what drives us as architects to create new and unique environments. And it's only through these new opportunities, as I look at, to create this diversity only creates a better neighborhood. And so I think that as planning commissioners and neighbors, you want to look at diversity, you want to have growth. Now, we're trying to really work to keep this structure to only two feet roughly above the existing roofline. And I think that's, we've really done a good job of getting there, and it wasn't easy. I would like just to ask my client to come up here for one quick second. I'd like to confer with him, and then I'll make my final presentation. Is Kevin here? Before Kevin gets here, I'd just like to talk about solar panels. New homes are required steps by state to have solar panels, and we would be careful about how they are placed and consult, uh, solar companies.
A clarification for that? New homes are required now by state law to have solar panels. Given that this is a complete tear-down, it would qualify as that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not just two feet, it's two feet plus?
If it's a new permit for a new home, then yes, yeah.
What would the guide, something for the future for us to look at? If they're keeping one wall up to get over that old way of not fully demolishing, would they avoid the solar panels, therefore the additional heat, height?
I don't want to give you any ideas, it's just, I'm...
I, I think we'd have to look at that, I...
So that's a question, an outstanding question.
Yeah.
Um, and for consideration, since I have to get a new roof too. These days, they come in varying shapes and sizes. There's even shingles that are solar now, so you don't necessarily need the panels. So it, it is something we definitely have to consider, but there, there are really non-impact ones, too.
Okay, sir?
Okay, um, I'd like to create some continuity with this group. I'd like to create some continuity with this group. One of the discussions that Planning Commission had, that, and actually, some of the condominium owners had, were that it looked a little boxy, didn't look so residential. And we had two windows on the second floor that were for two bedrooms that were actually, Kevin and his wife are going to live there, and their kids are grown, but they may come and stay once in a while. So those bedrooms are really secondary bedrooms. And I purposely said, you know, to Kevin, "Well, why don't we, we can get rid of those windows, and then eliminate some light pollution." But the actual reality of it is, is that there won't be a lot of light coming out of those windows. So the offer that I'd like to make to all of the members of Vallejo Court, and this is, this is our, our offer to create some continuity of the community. And then, as, we are willing to lower the roof by 50 percent. And that's down to one foot approximately above the existing roof. And then also, have the opportunity to put those windows back, to create more of a residential look on that front elevation. And that is, I think, more than a fair compromise, or even goes way beyond a compromise, but I think my client has shown tremendous good faith, because he wants to live in this house, and see 20 of his neighbors drive by, and not have to worry, and he'd like to say hi to them, because he's going to be living there for the rest of his life. So that's an offer that is well beyond anything that we've discussed prior, but I think is a good offer to this project.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Noor. And just for clarification, would that be then, because I know there was some discussion about eight versus nine-foot ceiling heights, so you'd go to an eight-foot...
I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing to change any interior heights, because that is irrelevant. What we're talking about is the, the actual roofline height as to the existing roof that is there.
Okay. Now, I'm sure we all have comments and questions, I'm sure that the appallants would like to have a chance to respond. And I do appreciate the willingness to make that compromise and that offer. I think I would suggest that, you know, as not all of the folks on Vallejo are actually here tonight, what might be most productive is some type of a community meeting offline to try to reach that agreement, working with staff, and with the applicant and the appellant. Is that something that would be amenable to? Yes, Councilman Pappen?
I think it'd be productive for us to give our comments at this point in time. I'm not opposed to going down that path, but I think as much input that...
Do we need to close the public hearing?
No, we've ended public comment, but the public hearing is still going.
So, would you like to hear public comment on that suggestion? No, not really.
No, no.
I'm trying to be as productive as possible here. So why don't we bring, come back with that, and try to get as much of our comments out as we can, to be efficient and productive? It's going to be a long night.
Okay. And maybe would the appallants like to respond to that suggestion from the applicant?
What's I just said?
Not a full public comment, but just, just from the appallants who...
What we're going to say, and then they could... No, I would rather listen to them first. We might not have...
And I know that the people here can't represent those who aren't here, so that's why I don't think we can make this decision tonight, but...
To be productive, let's just start commenting here.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for participating tonight. I know this is a difficult thing for everyone, and Mr. and Mrs. Chang, you have a lot of good friends, nice to know here. I did go up and view the sightlines, and I will, at this point, have to agree with the applicants, or the...
Is it appellants?
Appellants. There are concerns, my primary concern is the precedent for the other homes along that street as well, following suit. I think we are in the same position we were with the TODs, in that the apartments to the south there are not the best designs, and those went up. And then we have people, the flat roofs continuing. I think it changes the harmony of the neighborhood, and not necessarily for the better. I really appreciate all the efforts that have been done to help make accommodations here, and I would like to see Mr. and Mrs. Chang have a home that they can enjoy there. But I cannot, at this point, approve the proposed property because of the height line, or the roof lines there. I don't, I think we're disrupting a harmony, and we are setting a bad precedent for all the other homes along that street. So I would hope that something can be done, whether it is shifting the property, that they can enjoy a view towards the back more so, without going up. Those are my primary concerns here. And I know every time they have to come back and do things here, and work with the community, this is time and money, and it's very, very expensive. But the concerns of all the neighbors to the west there, I think, do have a significant impact on the proposal as it currently exists.
Okay. No comments?
I have a question for Councilman Pappen.
Yes, Mayor Lee.
I have a question for Councilman Pappen. Are you objecting to a two-story addition, or are you objecting to the design?
I'm objecting to the increase in the roofline. And I'm not a fan, I'm not a fan of...
So you don't like the roofline, or you don't like the fact that you're adding a second story?
I think you can have a second story if you go down in the back, but if you're increasing the roofline, I do think it significantly impacts not only the neighborhood, but sets a precedent. I don't like flat roofs. To say, that's not my preference at all here, but I understand designs change. It's just something I wish hadn't started on that block, but you're going to be looking at it moving forward here. So I don't know if I'm answering your question appropriately, Mayor Lee, but...
I just want to make, I guess, I think that the state doesn't, unfortunately, I'm also looking at possible lawsuits, and I'm thinking that, unfortunately, the state doesn't, doesn't, the only thing the state protects is, is solar panels, this airspace, unfortunately. They don't protect, the only way that you can protect a view, or protect air, sunlight, is to have an easement. In other words, you have to buy the rights.
I understand that.
And so that's what, that's what most people do, they buy the rights.
And according to our municipal code, it's significant impact to the neighborhood as well.
Can we have a comment from Mr. Conneran, please, legal counsel?
I'm sorry?
A comment from our legal counsel?
Yeah. The city has a design review ordinance, and you, while the mayor's correct that in terms of property rights, you know, people often will acquire, or can sometimes acquire easements, it's, what we're dealing with here is the city's design review ordinance, which gives you leeway within the findings that are stated in the staff report, to decide whether or not a project meets those requirements, and whether or not the project can go forward or not. And you just need to make findings that support the conclusion that the council eventually makes.
Okay. Councilman Oliva?
My point is, if we get sued as a city, we still lose, because the applicant will still get what they want, and maybe more some, and the city has to deal with a lawsuit, because we didn't, we didn't follow state law.
The state law allows the city to adopt a design review ordinance. We are not enforcing any sort of property right, or right to an easement, or right to a view. We are enforcing the city's design review ordinance, which state law does allow us to adopt and enforce.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing.
Doesn't sound, I don't think so. Okay, Councilman Oliva?
So I'm viewing this, I'm viewing this a little bit differently, and not necessarily as a design, or an opinion, whether I like the design of the architect or not, but looking to see if planning looked at all the facts thoroughly. And I too went up to the property with Mr. Poon, and viewed, what, four or five different units. And the question here is, is the view significantly obstructed? And there is obstruction, there is, there is, Mr. Puccinelli, was it your place that I was in? I think that was most significant to me, when looking at the ground level, like Ms. Schneider kind of mentioned, that you're, when you're looking straight on into the, to the house, Unit Three, I guess, unit, is it Unit Three? That is impacted somewhat. I guess the question is significant, and my opinion to any of that, other than design, would be, can the neighbors work it out? And my first inclination, and I've had this conversation with the residents that I did have an opportunity to meet, was, how would, how could we compromise that? So I commend the architect and the owner of the property to make another, another adjustment, because I think they want to be neighbors, friends. So I applaud the proposal to go back to what Vice Mayor suggested, a community meeting, come up with some ideas, and lower the roofline somewhat, and lower the significance of the views. I want to remember that, if you look at a lot of the findings in the presentation from the Vallejo Court, there's trees, and there's chimneys, too. And those are above any of the visuals that are already there. And trees grow, and we can't cut those down. And the chimneys are there, and now we'll have the solar panels as well, it sounds like, with, with a lot of options to not raise it up another two feet. So I'm all for the compromise, and I think that planning did a great job on this, and it does look like they were thorough. And I would not look for opinion of design, but to say, were they thorough, yes. But I, I open, you opened the door to compromise, and I'm going to suggest that you get together and make it work with the neighbors.
So are you suggesting you're not going to do a vote tonight?
I didn't call for the vote, no. We're still discussing.
We're still discussing.
You want to continue this hearing?
We're still discussing.
Still discussing. Councilman Schneider?
Hi. Again, I thank both parties, and I did also go up to the site and saw the, I think it was the middle unit, Miss DeCise unit, and one of the other applicants. And to me, it is a significant view, but I have other concerns. One neighbor told me, their original owners, that at the time that those three multifamily dwelling units were built, there had been an agreement within the neighborhood of a moratorium. The residents up there on Vallejo Court asked the city to find that document, and the city couldn't find that document. If that document does exist, and something is approved that's against what was in the moratorium, are we liable? Apparently, that, those three MFDs wanted to be three-story buildings, and the Vallejo Court neighborhood pre-existed them, and they were able to get agreement from the city at the time, at the approval of those three multifamily dwellings, to stop any additional height increases. That's my understanding of what this moratorium is, and my guess is it's from the early '60s, possibly late '50s.
There may have been a private agreement. In order for there to be an enforceable legal agreement that restricts the development of other homes, those homes would need to be a party to that agreement. In order for it to be enforceable, as properties change hands, that agreement would need to be recorded on the title of the homes. So I'm very skeptical that there is an enforceable legal agreement, certainly nothing binding on the city, that would arise out of different homes, you know, on the other part of the street. I understand there may be, I, you know, we don't, I don't know...
So if the documents weren't here in our records, would the documents possibly have been registered or recorded at the county?
If it's deed restricted, as the city attorney said, then yes.
It would be in the title of each of the properties along...
So to me, that's one reason for us to get all the information on the table. Now, as to the other findings, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with Councilman Pappen, and it's such a pleasure to get to do that. It, I don't find that this particular architectural style is in keeping with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is pitched roofs of a particular style, and I have been trying to figure out what that style is, whether it's ranch, it's not really ranch, but it is a California style, and please tell me what it is. And this house is clearly an Eichler. And to my knowledge, there are known Eichlers in the Millbrae portion of Mills Estates. So to me, it will stick out, it will not blend with the neighborhood. And we are supposed to be able to rule on architectural style and consistency within the neighborhood. So I don't, I would argue that this isn't in compliance with the style of the existing neighborhood. I'm looking for my other... I also think that it isn't harmonious with the neighborhood. It's distinct, it's quite different than the other housing styles. Now, I would say that the green tile roof just below this unit isn't in keeping with the neighborhood either, and I don't know how that came through. It's a lovely roof, it's a beautiful green tile roof, but it certainly doesn't fit in this neighborhood. And if we keep allowing this, we're going to have neighborhoods that don't blend at all, they will not be harmonious. So I have a, those are probably my main two disagreements with the findings. I don't think they're consistent with what is supposed to be in our own code.
So we could actually, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So it could be remanded back to planning, or to avoid conflicts with other neighbors. I mean, you could have some sort of a, what you're suggesting, although I don't know how that works, and how long that would take. It's kind of, the applicant has been working a long time on this, and we need to be aware of the expenses that any homeowner would take. We do want to encourage renovations and remodels, but we have to, you know, try to be efficient.
So what is the appeal process? What are our options from council?
Well, obviously, you have the ability to approve or deny tonight. If you wish, you could remand this back to the count, to the Planning Commission for additional hearings, or compromise. Or you could continue it and bring it back to the council at a later date, after the parties have had a chance to confer. So, sort of four options there. Approve, deny, remand, continue. Huh?
You're really making it easy, aren't you?
Four options?
Freedom.
I, hello?
Yes, Mayor Lee.
You know, I, I think, you know, I really understand what's, the pains that the, that the people in Vallejo are undergoing. But I also understand the pain of the homeowner, too. And that the problem with our city is that, in any city, is that when you build, when you build, and you have a house next to another house, you're going to have some sort of view blockage. And unfortunately, the blue, the view that they're experiencing, the blockages, is quite stunning, and I understand that. And they don't want to lose that. But at the same time, I think that the applicant has been, you know, has been compromising quite a bit. And the reason why they put the flat roof is to allow more view, to not have a blockage of view. So what you're saying is that, what I hear from the council is that you don't want to have a second story, and that they should push out. Is that what I'm hearing?
Not for me. I'm, that was a suggestion of mine, that I'm not wondering if they could take up more of the back lot to increase, the homeowner could increase his view from the back, and the property value there, without significantly impacting all the people on Vallejo.
Yes, Councilman Schneider?
The other thing, too, you have to consider, is that even though there's the other houses across the street, they're all flat roofs, too. across the street, they're all flat roofs too. And they're two-story buildings. Even though they're multifamily buildings, they're still two stories, and they're still.
Well, according, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
And we have plenty of flat roofs, hang on, we have plenty of flat roofs homes in Millbrae. So, you know, if you want to send it back to the planning commission for them to work it out with the applicant and the people, and the neighbors, I'm all, I'm good for that, because I'm always good for compromise. And I think that, you know, the applicant seems very, like they're really bending over backwards to try to, to, you know, to, to appease the neighbors, because he doesn't want to have a bad relationship with the neighbors. He made that pretty clear. So that's where I would like to go, send it back to the planning commission, see if they can come, come up with a compromise.
I would go there too, please.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know what, exactly what to say, because I have been up there to Vallejo Court, and I think from some of these, from some of these units, especially on the lower level, in the middle, there is, in my opinion, a significant blockage of the view. From the upper levels, not so much. I, I think typically, you know, we do have planning, building codes, and we do allow, you know, up to a certain height of 25 feet. And usually, you know, if you go up 25 feet, and you're blocking somebody's view, the response is, well, that person can go up as well and, and make it even. In this case, it's, it's not really the case, because there's a multi-unit building, and some people only own that first floor across the street. So they really don't have any potential recourse to improve their properties. I think the propose, and to be honest, I'm not a big fan of the flat roof. I know we do have some around Millbrae. I think it would be a more attractive design with, you know, the current angled roof. That being said, if the, I do support the rights of the property owner to improve their property. And if this is preferable to the folks on Vallejo than, than having a pointed roof, I'm, I'm not going to argue with that.
Pitched roof.
Pitched roof, hatched roof, whatever you want to call it.
Pitched.
Gabled roof. I think going back to a community meeting would be the best way to achieve compromise. We have our applicants from TOD 1, and that process did help to create some agreement with, between that applicant and the residents on Hemlock Drive, and really to improve that project. I know it's obviously very different comparing a 10-story tower to, you know, a one to two-story building. But I think that would be a good way to try to work this out, and, you know, try to have a more harmonious neighborhood. Councilman Schneider?
And unfortunately, you know, like I said, the state's not, I mean, there is no, there is no protection of views, unfortunately, unless you buy the easement, unless you buy the rights to those views. And nobody, nobody came up and said they bought the rights to the view. So.
Although it is in our general plan.
That's what we're facing.
And maybe it shouldn't be on our general plan, but there is some reference to protecting views, if possible, in our general plan. Councilman Schneider?
And that's what we're trying to do here. So let's, let's.
This is my third time in trying to speak. Mayor Lee?
I'm, I'm sorry, can, uh, Council?
I didn't know that.
I'm sorry, Mayor Lee, can, can you hold off one moment? Councilman Schneider?
Sure, sorry about that.
No worries.
Something for us to learn on virtual meetings. To the, the architect, when I'm looking at A5O, and I'm looking at the roof line, I appreciate that you said that you're trying to bring the height down. I read in the documents that the, the owners are adamant at having their nine-foot ceilings. I've suddenly been walking through every house I've been in lately, trying to figure out if it's a seven, eight, or a nine-foot ceiling on there. I don't think you've got a lot of wiggle room with that roof, but I appreciate the offer. In this day and age where we're trying to add windows and had natural lighting, when I read that the compromise was to take out windows, I was disappointed. So if this is going to go back to a gathering of the neighborhood, windows are important. I, I'm not sure that trying to prevent light pollution to the neighbors up the hill was really, it was a nice offer, appreciated, but I don't think it really solved anything. To me, it made a more boxy, square-looking kind of building. So if you're coming back, I'd prefer a building that's much more, well, I'm not a flat roof fan. My neighborhood allowed a flat roof to come in, and, and it's jarring in the neighborhood that has all the other tile roofs. But anyway, windows are good. Nothing wrong with windows.
Okay, so, Mayor Lee, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot my, I, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. I just can't hear, hear people talk, and I can't see people, so I'm just stabbing the dark here.
No worries.
But, no, I, my question for, for attorneys is, so do we continue the hearing, keep it open, or do we close it and send it back to the planning commission? What, what is the process?
And can we ask the applicant their preference, because?
And, and the appellant as well, I would say.
Sure.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, can you say, can you repeat that?
We're getting people together here, Wayne.
Sorry, what were you going to say about?
I was discussing the, the response to the mayor's question, which you, the, the city council does have the right to remand it back to planning commission for redesign and working with the community, and then it would stay down at the planning commission level for that approval. And then if it was appealed, if that decision was appealed, then it would come back to the city council. But I don't, I wouldn't see that happening, given the direction of the city council tonight, that we would work with the neighborhood and the architect and the, and the property owner.
Yes, sir.
Torin Norr, architect, thank you. We've worked on this project for a long time. If we go to the planning commission, we're talking another couple months, we're talking about noticing, we're talking about another month, we're talking about losing a whole building season. My client won't be able to start this project for at least another year, and that's the reality, okay? And we do have a lot of stuff on the table here, and there's a lot of decisions that have to be made. I understand that, hey, not everybody loves a flat roof. Not everybody loves a pitched roof. I think we're talking about diversity in design within the community, and, and the planning commission had no issues with, with the flat roof. And so we're really here to, to hear the appeal from, from the, from the appellants, and none of them really said, we don't like a flat roof. They just basically said, we don't like the view being blocked, and we don't like the fact that it's, doesn't quite fit in the neighborhood. What we'd like to do is, is come to some sort of, maybe a process that may somewhat shorten this timeframe, and I think there is a process that could be achieved. And that is, if we could get together very quickly with the neighbors. And by the way, I want you to know that when I, when I sent out a certified letter to all the neighbors, I put in there a request, here's my information, here's my address, here's my phone number, here's my email. If you have any comments, any, any issues with the design of this project, please email me. I didn't get a single comment from any of the neighbors regarding anything that they weren't happy with. It wasn't until that the, the appeal was submitted, that we knew that we were kind of going through a different route, okay? So I think that's critical in the way architects kind of communicate, so that we do it early on and not at this juncture right now. Because right now, we're kind of like throwing balls up in the air, and we don't know where they're going to land. So what I'd like to produce, propose, is that certainly I'd like to get together with, with all the neighbors up on Cano Court. And I'd love to do it up on, on one of their, their facilities, one of the houses that we talked about, and come to a understanding and an agreement of what we're all comfortable with, not necessarily what you may be comfortable with. And in order to do that, it would be fairly simple. We put out a notice, we get together, we set some dates, and I get my, my tracing paper, and we do some sketches, and we do some finger pointing, and we talk about what's going to work for everybody. Once we come to a decision on that, we go back to the planning commission and meet with Mr. Meiser and Sam, and get conditions of approval based on our input, which is fairly minor. We're not talking about adding square footage, we're talking about lowering the house a foot, which I think could all be done on staff level, and that rather than going through a whole new public hearing of planning commission and taking up a lot of their time and coming back to your time, is that basically you give planning commission some latitude to make the decision that both parties have come together and agreed on a solution. And then we, we, as a property owner, can move forward with building the house and not wait.
Councilman Schneider?
To me, it is the city council's position to make sure that a neighborhood is harmonious. And I am not, I don't come from the planning commission, so I will count on staff making sure that I follow whatever rules we have. But I'm going to go back to what Councilwoman Papman said, that changing, a fairly significant changing in architectural style, flat roof or not, is a significant precedent. Raising a roof line when there are other houses, it could start a, a whole cascade of things, which is going to change a neighborhood. This is precedent-setting. And in Millbrae's past, we have not always caught this. So I would prefer, I, I don't like the idea that if it goes back, that it goes back to planning, something gets approved, the people on Vallejo Court have to come back and file and spend another $1,000 or $854 to come back. But I'd rather see it come back to us. I think this is precedent-setting, and therefore it deserves to come back to us. But, I mean, if you can settle it, I suppose I'd flex on that, but I don't like, I don't like some of the words that you used. Like, if we may not like it, therefore we don't count.
I apologize if that's the way I came across, but.
Councilman Papman?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the applicant working with the appellants to come up with some sort of a acceptable compromise here. This is not as significant a project as TOD 1 and 2, which I still have issues with, and didn't seem to make a difference to some people. But I think the key people, the residents here, have communicated, and if you are able to work it out with them. Again, my primary concern was setting a precedent, and now we've had an added factor here. If solar is added according to the law, you're dealing with other inches here, so we need to be aware of that as it progresses. So I'm comfortable with you all working together. That's, I don't think it needs to come back to us.
Yeah, and I would also suggest, you know, working through staff, not that I don't trust you, but, as opposed to you sending out a certified letter to, to work it, do it through staff and find a convenient time for as many of the residents as, as possible. Can we have a response from the appellants? Is that a process that you would be willing to, to work with, of those who are here? And you'd, please come to the microphone, to the, to podium?
I think everyone needs to come up here, because I, I don't feel comfortable speaking for everyone. Hi, I'm back. So Stephanie Taylor, 281 Vallejo Court. I believe, just in informal conversations we've had, listening to the applicant and to counsel, that we are interested in meeting to try to come to a resolution on our own. And we appreciate you see the significance of the, the precedent-setting. And yes, we, we are not as concerned about the window pollution. Windows are fine. That's something that, to my knowledge, we never brought up. So we're fine with that. The flat roof, the style, we don't care for that, but we're trying to be willing to compromise on people's individual preferences, but still, it's, it's the view impact is our major concern. The harmony is our second major concern. We know we're going to have to make a compromise somewhere. So I believe that coming together and, in a community meeting is the next best approach.
I think it might be a best way to, like, try to work it out. Sounds like the, the way to go, but, but the only way that the owner will, or the applicant will accept is that they will add another story and have a flat roof. So that flat roof will not go away. Even though they're not raising any height for their roof, there'll be three feet of solar panel. Because on a flat roof, like, yeah, we, we didn't mention that we dislike the, a flat roof, but from, from, from my perspective, on this upper floor, while you're looking your entire neighborhood, a majority, a pitch roof, all of a sudden, right in front of you, you have a flat roof with mechanical equipment, solar panels, puddles, is really, the view is really disruptive. So, and with our experience with the planning commission meeting, and it, I don't feel very comfortable that going there will have any decision going favor our way. But it's, it's just my take, that doesn't represent the, all the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may suggest, just because time, maybe we give everyone a minute, or two or three minutes, whatever the preference of the city council is, you know, to time the response. It's, it's, it's at the pleasure of the council, but just to keep things moving in an orderly manner is a suggestion.
Okay. Yes.
I'm Janet Hahn, and my husband spoke earlier. We're going to move our daughters into the lower units there. Their view will be very seriously obstructed. The, the beauty of the place from the major rooms will be destroyed. But the more important thing to me, I drive the neighborhood, and Councilwoman Papman tried to find the right word for this neighborhood. It's a Kincaid neighborhood. Not everybody likes those Christmas cards, but the people who live there must have, or they wouldn't have bought. And they'd like it to stay that way. So would I, because I drove the neighborhood, and I just felt warm all over. It's a lovely, comfortable bedroom community of lovely houses that hug the hill and don't stick up like warts. And that's what I'd like to see continue. And when this architecture with the extra height, and then the three-foot of solar panels goes on top of it, it's a wart. And it's a precedent to build more warts, and the neighborhood will be destroyed.
Okay, thank you. So I think we do have, you know, consensus here to move ahead with a, sorry. Okay, if you could please wrap it up.
So, yeah, this is, so for, like, this, this appeal is, is about, like, appealing to the planning commission's decision. And this decision should be based on those four findings. They, they agree that those four findings, including the, the view, they determine is insignificant. They determine that the building, the proposed building, is compatible to the neighborhood. If those are the grounds for approving the projects, those should be the grounds for them to approve the projects. However, if you don't agree with those, those findings would be the ground to disallow this project. That's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. So, anybody else has a comment?
Vice Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
When you envision the, a community meeting where we can try to get together and work out a, a solution that everyone can be supportive of, hopefully, would that include the planning commission?
No, I don't think so.
No, it would include staff, the neighborhood.
It would include city staff, okay. Just to clarify, we would be.
I, I believe the planning commission would have to approve the, whatever the, the consensus decision is.
And the gentleman's comment, we, we understand the four findings that need to be made.
Correct.
And we'll work.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion, or?
If it's the council's desire to remand this to the planning commission, you should make a motion and vote on it.
Okay.
If that's your.
I think we need to then remand it with the state, the conditions that have been said here. In other words, the appellant pointed out the findings, and I think we've been clear on a couple of the findings.
I mean, certainly, everything that's been said here will be taken in by staff and, and brought back to the planning commission. And certainly, if, whatever the planning commission's decision is, they can use those to make the findings. But I, I don't, I don't think it works to piecemeal, give them findings to go make. I mean, I think you can certainly, they can get the wisdom of your views, and they can hear this record. can hear this record, but they make an independent decision based on what's in front of them, presumably following a community meeting, so.
Okay, we're going on 10 o'clock, and we got another thing.
Vice Mayor, but we do understand the height issue, the view-impact issue, we understand neighborhood compatibility, and I think there may be ways through grading and other things that have not yet been explored to maybe lower the pad even and bring that down.
And to explore potentially flat solar panels, or solar panels on, you know, on the first floor, but...
We will look at everything, and then, and including...
Just try to work it out to minimize the impact.
Maintaining one story and then moving in the backyard, or seeing what we can do to...
Okay, okay, I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Second from Councilwoman Oliva?
Verbal vote.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The item passes.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a two-minute break, and then we will continue with the other public hearing.
Sorry.
It's okay.
You made the last question.
I'm sorry, you need to go higher than this.
No, no, sorry, you need to go higher than this.
I'm sorry.
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 Approve the project, approve it with added conditions, continue the project for additional design revisions and/or deny the project based on articulated findings. Here is the site plan as you're aware. This would, the R1 building would be fronting El Camino Real and the new California Drive extension with California Drive along the backside of the project to the east where the R2 and C1 building would be directly across from the BART intermodal station and near the Kinston Ride lot. Here's an aerial view showing the project in context with the BART station, intermodal station with the airport off to the east. And then here's a little bit more of a zoom and aerial perspective that shows a little bit of the colors that have been changed throughout the process to be more softened towards the neighborhood and to come up with a more of a residential feel, and I'll get into that in a little more detail. One of the primary things that came up during the course of the study sessions, both that Planning Commission and City Council, was really the notion of how the R1 building looks at the corner of El Camino Real and California Drive. Specifically, the notion of this sort of the fin and the signage and that corner element was something that came up. This was the previous cornered sign, just to show you a little bit of how the project has evolved. This was the next iteration of the proposed design, which shows the change in materiality, the change in color, some of the roof overhangs, the way that they frame sort of the middle of the building and the top and then the base as well. What you'll note on this project iteration here is that the signage was brought down to the pedestrian level. It sat on an eyebrow. That was something that the council specifically had comments on. And then we move to this new design, which now has the signage fronting El Camino Real vertically on the front elevation of the building. Moving on, just in terms of some of the architectural elevations, this is the California Avenue extension that essentially is looking towards the south. You can see where the building has been changed to that more, that more taupe color, as well as sort of the salmon color, if you will, or terracotta, rather, that is really speaking more to the residents to the north. And then much of the conversation about this project has been very much about the way that the building steps back from the adjoining neighborhood, about the elimination of balconies, about a number of the concerns that the residents had in terms of privacy and noise and view impact. And so balconies have been removed off the north elevation. The building has been stepped back. And moving on, this is the Sarah Avenue elevation. Of course, the project architect is going to get in much more detail on all these elevations, so I'm going a bit quickly. If I need to slow down, please let me know. Here's the full elevation along Sarah Avenue. The office building, office building has been talked about quite a bit. It's a very modern building with a lot of use of both vision glass as well as spandrel glass, aluminum mullions. It's almost a nine-story building with the Galleria on the ground floor that is meant to relate to the BART station. It's meant to welcome people as they come off of that platform and walk into the building. This is the ground-level concept of the Galleria space, soaring ceilings, a lot of light that would come into this. I know that the project applicant is going to speak to you in a lot more detail about the proposed artwork that would be within that space. And then last but certainly not least has been the transition concerns that we've had with the project as it relates to the neighbors to the north, the Hemlock neighborhood. We've spoken in the past sessions about how we have the split zoning in this area and so that the step-back requirement that's set forth in the specific plan only impacts the R2 building. That's where it's required. And so here again, this is an image you've seen before that really speaks to how the east part of Hemlock Avenue is residential, the west part is commercial zoning, and therefore the step-back requirement, that 45-degree plane only relates to the R2 building. This is an image that shows the area of the building that is currently not in compliance with the standard. That is the subject of the specific plan amendment that we'll get into in a little more detail. So there have been a number of conversations that have been going on in earnest to try to come up with better transition standards between the project and the Hemlock neighborhood. Really, conversations have been happening since the end of last year, all the way up through, just most recently, I think a week ago, if I'm not mistaken. And so with all of those conversations, we do believe that there has been a compromise between the neighbors as well as the project applicant. All of the conditions and compromises are set forth within the design review permit application as conditions of approval. Every single one of those conditions would be effectuated during different times of the project. So in other words, whether it's a building permit issuance or something like that would trigger implementation of each of these conditions. There again were concerns about the non-compliance of the 45-degree setback. The balconies were a concern because of the privacy, noise, the visual impact, smoking, et cetera. And then also, last but not least, there were a number of concerns from the neighborhood as it relates to the construction impacts when this project would go underway, namely noise and dust and disruption of quality of life. So with that, the balconies are removed as we talked about. A number of improvements have been agreed to. All of those conditions are set forth in, I think they're numbered 17 through 25, in the design review permit and also for reference within the specific plan amendment report. The building itself has gone through design iterations to become more residential and feel. The color palette has been a topic of discussion. And so with that, the specific plan amendment, I want to talk about that in more detail. So again, the project as it stands now is not compliant with the 45-degree standard. That standard really is meant to provide step-back or setback from the residential area to the north. That's sort of a very typical approach in transition standards. That 45-degree angle is set forth in the specific plan on page 5.15. Notably, figure 5.3 on page 5.12 of the specific plan has a map that indicates with a squiggly line that this standard would apply. So what is intended with the amendment is to remove that designation off of the map so thereby it would have a very limited scope. It would only really apply to this project. It would not impact other areas of the city where this situation occurs. So that 45-degree standard would still be in place. Again, like I said, the amendment would only impact the Sarah Station site. And then really, the conditions that have been agreed upon by the project applicant and the residents really go much further. They go much more above and beyond the transition standards that we even have in our specific plan. So I think that might be a model of something that we want to look for maybe down the road when we're looking at other policy documents. The amendment itself does require, it's a legislative act, it does require approval from council. The Planning Commission did make their recommendation of approval to council. And so with that, I know I went lightning fast, but we are recommending approval of the design review permit to adopting a resolution that would approve the design review permit and master sign permit for the project, subject to the findings and the conditions that are all in the staff report. And then likewise with the specific plan, we also recommend that the council adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the specific plan, which would revise that figure I talked about. You have attached to the specific plan amendment and resolution is the amended map that removed that squiggly line. So that's the extent of the amendment. There's no language changes. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions or have the applicant present? Okay, let's have the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Our point is, sorry. And then we have a microphone. Can you hear me through the mic?
Not yet.
I did, yeah. Can you hear me? Okay. That's it? Well, good evening or good morning, everybody. Anyway, it's, thank you for, thank you for having us back. I'm Paul Wolford, the Design Principal with HOK, and I'm the architect who designed the Commercial One office building and worked on the master plan for the development. I'm here with Bill Higgins. He's the Design Principal with Smith Group, who's the architect for the residential buildings. We wanted to come back and specifically address the very things that we've been discussing with you over the last study sessions and we discussed with Planning Commission as well. So if we could, I'll actually just go directly to those. So just to reframe the conversation, here's the plan of the development at the ground floor. And what I'd like to do is start with some specific things that you had asked about and we discussed when we were together about the Commercial Office Building. So the very first one of those things would be actually street signage, for building numbering signage. So if you can see the cursor on the screen right here, this is where building signage numbering occurs. So the building number is 100 California, and this is both in day and evening you can see. And what I wanted to share here are the standards that we're proposing for the signage permit. So this is the street numbering signage.
Sorry, what slide number are you on? 34?
34. So what we did is, rather than going through all 80-something slides, what I've done is we've just condensed this presentation to the specific things that you've all asked about and we wanted to specifically address. So I wanted to make sure that everyone was clear about what we're proposing. So this is the signage typology, scale and kind of style. Another thing that we have proposed that wasn't actually in the package and we previously discussed it with you, but there was conversation about, and folks did raise, the idea of perhaps a kind of kinetic display of the train arrivals and departures for Caltrain and BART, as well as airplane departures and arrivals. And so what we're proposing is a new interactive kiosk right here that would be right inside of the glass wall of the Galleria, so you could see it from both inside the Galleria, if you're standing inside, it'll be double-sided, and outside, so you don't have to come inside. You could see it from the sidewalk. And these are some examples of precedence of what those are like. And so this is actually an enhancement from when we were last with you, and this is brought up, and so actually, we agree with you. That's a great idea.
Bless you for doing that. I don't know why the BART one didn't do it, but thank you.
Is that, just so we're flipping pages here, is that in the little handout or is that in the bigger one?
It's in this one. It's in the little one.
The little one. Okay, thank you. And it's page?
Twenty-eight. It's 28B.
28B.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think this will be a real improvement to the project.
I think it'd be a improvement for any project. Hint, hint to somebody else, but thank you so much.
You know, one of the other things we wanted to discuss and you asked questions about was the dynamic wall. And so what I wanted to share with you is, and I think, and if you have any questions about what we mean by dynamic wall, but essentially what we're talking about is an LED wall that's going to be programmable and will be changing content. So of course, it's not a static thing. And so, and because it is a programmable wall, one of the things that the development team has basically endorsed is the idea that this would not only speak to, you know, scenes from Milbrae and the adjacent surrounding Santa Cruz Mountains and things like that, but also things that might be occurring in town, such as the Lunar New Year, Milbrae Food and Wine Festival, the, you know, music venues, classic car events, more food and wine events, Fourth of July. And essentially, the idea being that it will be programmable, and as you're coming off of BART or Caltrain and you're coming here, you'll be actually seeing specific things that tell the public about what's happening in the community. Just different examples graphically. Another thing that you've talked and asked about is the Milbrae Street signage. And so we have a welcome to Milbrae sign, and it sits right here in the plaza as you come right to the building face.
What was it going to be again?
Page 27.
No, I see where it is, but where on the building? Excuse me?
Right at the entrance to BART. And Caltrain. So before you would get to the front doors, which are here, or walk up Linden, it's right there as a monument sign. Here's a more detailed example of it, and these are other graphic examples of similar monument signs, but this is the scale that we're proposing. Oh, wasn't I not sharing? Sorry.
No.
So another thing that you had asked about was, what is the quality and experience of the roof terrace? So, I'm sorry, here we go. So here's a graphic example of the roof terrace on the upper floor of the Commercial Office Here's a detailed example of what the terrace looks like. So the terrace is actually biased in this direction, and that's because what we had done is we've done actually a wind analysis, and because the winds are coming from this direction, the building itself is really shielding you, and this is the occupied amount of area we can have on the roof by code. And then you can see the planting types.
He's left the conference. He'll call back.
Good nightmare. Yeah. And you see the different kinds of native and Mediterranean plants that will be here on the roof, and you can see that they'll be done in bands. It'll actually be quite a beautiful roof garden and terrace, I think. And here's a 3D view of what that feels like, and so you can see that there's essentially a tall windshield that will surround the terrace so that you can occupy it comfortably. But, but again, to reiterate, largely the breezes are coming from this side, but should they change direction, because of course they do at times, at different times of year, you'll be protected and you can occupy that comfortably in the day and the evening. There have been conversations and questions about public art. So one of the things that we wanted to share is that while we don't have the specific art and the specific artists selected, we wanted to talk to you about what the development team is proposing for those types of public art and the locations where they'll go. And as the development moves forward, the artists will, pardon me, the artists will be selected and you'll have an opportunity to engage with the artists in a more detailed fashion.
Breezes are coming from this. Has joined the conference.
So let's go through them. So the first one is, so I've already talked to you about the media wall, and that sits in the Galleria. The next one is the courtyard, really between Commercial Building One and Residential Building Two, and we're proposing a water feature. And so these are different examples of what that water feature very well could be like and what we're intending for it to be like. Another example of the public art, I'm just going to go back to this, is this example here. So in the courtyard, we're proposing basically a gathering space with a kind of large firepit and/or water feature, but something that would be designed as a gathering space for seating around it. In the courtyard at the end of Sarah, so I'm going to just go back again, just to reorient you, here, we're proposing interactive art. So this would be interactive environmental art. And these are by a variety of different artists. This is at the Exploratorium. These art pieces exist in different places. Personally, I've worked directly with Ned Con, who's the artist who suggested in this example. I was the architect who designed the BART station at SFO years ago, and I worked with Ned Con very closely to design the wind portal, if you know that, as you leave and enter the BART station. The other example of public art is a series of bronze figurine children, which would be life-size, and they exist, they will be located here at the entrance to this paseo that will take you into the courtyard at the end of Sarah. So this is just an example of different dynamic walls that have been used in different similar buildings and different similar lobby, so you can see the scale of them. Now what we're going to do is, Bill's going to come up and he's actually going to talk about the changes and modifications to the residential work. When we were with you last at the last study session, one of the things that we did is we committed, I committed, to doing a peer review of the work, because I'm not the architect for Bill's projects. And so we met with Bill's team, we actually met with Brad, Harry, and the folks from the city, and we talked about what would feel appropriate and comfortable for a contemporary multi-story residential development. And what we proposed to Bill's team, and Bill took that into account and redesigned his building to accommodate that, was essentially a natural masonry material. It's called a terracotta tile. It's in natural finishes. These materials will look like this for hundreds and hundreds of years. And we felt that that was appropriate as opposed to white metal panels, which do have a more institutional character to them, and that this material is something that will feel comfortable adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And so before maybe we go to that, if we have, if you have any questions before Bill begins, please, let's take those.
Hi, do. Okay, I'm going.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Very nice. The, page 32, your monument there?
Uh-huh. Milbrae?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like better, kind of like you got Circus City there, or the two above that, a little more dramatic, a little bolder, maybe well-lit. But yeah, it just, it seems a little frail.
You know, I think one thing too is, is the monument that it sits on is a little low. So we might look at, we could, if, I think, I think also what you're seeing is, is the scale of the, you know, the signage is a little taller in the other examples. And so if that's a criteria, what we'll do is we'll raise the monument up so that it's taller and that the, and the signage actually will be lit. So it'll be.
It will be lit. Okay, yeah, so there was, it's a dramatic building. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I do love your information signs, shall we say, as to all the transportation, and you weren't even a part of that discussion. That was so nice. And as well, the media, water features and everything. I think they are all well in line and could be very exciting moving forward, not problematic like some of the previous ones from another project. So that was all I had. Thank you.
Perhaps should we approach this in a similar fashion as we did for TOD2, where we maybe go over one building at a time and then go over, you know, the artwork and landscaping and fixtures and things like that, so we can try to perhaps approve as much as we can tonight, if possible?
That's all I had for the office, if we're at that.
Okay.
Doing it in chunks so that we can stay on time.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, we, it is, I think we do have to open the public hearing. So do we have a, we have a motion from Councilman Schneider, second from Councilman Oliva. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Papin, Councilmember Oliva.
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holibur.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
To open the public hearing, Mayor Lee.
Did we lose him again?
Mayor Lee.
Let me see here, wait a minute.
I thought he came back.
Is this one? Yeah.
Is he on mute?
One thing I wanted.
We can open the public hearing with four votes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm, I just want to offer, I'm Bill Higgins. I wanted to just offer that I know that a lot of the community who's here, their focus has been on the residential, so they may not, may or may not have as many comments on the office, so I don't know if, in respect to what you just said, whether you wanted us to just finish our presentation and then the comments could apply to both.
Okay. Do you have, sorry, Mayor Lee, are you present?
We can hear you now, Mayor Lee.
Yeah.
Okay. We have opened the public hearing, so you're suggesting you'd like to finish your presentation, which includes the residential portion?
Honestly, we're glad to go with whatever direction you want. So if you'd like to talk about the Commercial Office Building, the artwork, I think that's totally fine, because we could get the yeses.
Sure. Their focus has been on the residential.
Okay. Well, maybe should we take public comment now and?
I would just ask you whether you want to take public comment on each individual.
On each individual item?
Better to finish all of the staff reports and then take the public comment and then do a discussion and vote. Otherwise, you're going to go back and forth a lot.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'd kind of like to do all the public comment at once instead of in chunks. So let's take the public comment now.
No, it wasn't.
You're not ready?
We want to hear all the staff.
Okay, all right, let's, okay, let's finish all the presentations. Okay. Sorry, I was a little confused there.
Yeah. Well, thank you, because I thought it'd be useful for the, for the community that's here. And in follow-up, what Paul said, we did take seriously his peer review, but also the study sessions that we have with the Planning Commission, the study session we have with you, the input from the community, especially related, obviously, to the residential component of the project. The buildings that were affected, of course, are one and R2. We did introduce this terracotta material in a variety of colors to create a palette that was warmer. The system is a high-quality exterior facade system, so it has the warmth of the terracotta colors and the range of colors that we're proposing, but it's still a very contemporary building in a high-quality sophisticated cladding system. And one of the comments that was made that was followed up on was the sign, as Brad mentioned, the sign of the Sarah Station sign, and it's now, as part of the redesign of the R1 building and including, incorporating the terracotta cladding system, we added the sign to face directly onto El Camino, so whether you're coming north or south, you will see the sign. It's not just a kind of a gateway sign coming from San Bruno. We also lettered it vertically, so you can read it without bending your head, and it's very simple to understand. It'll be backlit, and so that it will be a sign that'll give the signature, but without destroying the, the quality of life for the residents that are going to be living in these units. We don't want to, you know, have it such that like it's not going to be one of these highlighted signs that destroy the light quality of the unit. So these are just some views to give the overall sense of how we incorporated the terracotta panel system together with the glazing system that we proposed. We still want it to be a very transparent building for the residents, but as we move around, we did change color palettes. So the R1 building has a color palette of like a light sort of sienna color together with taupe, whereas the R2 building has more of a sand color with a, more of a darker terracotta color, to just give, have a variety of palette as we move through the project. And of course, this is a view of the court between R1 and R2. So this is that corner that was much talked about, and Brad mentioned how we transformed it from the large metal frame sign to something that is more residential, together with adding balconies on this corner. I know there were some comments from the City Council regarding the transparency and the views of the corner units. We tried to soften that by adding the terracotta cladding system, as well as wrapping the corner with balconies so that they act as like a buffer, a transition buffer to the resident in the unit. The other thing you'll notice is that we flushed, we eliminated all the balconies up to Level 7, so along this facade, and this is one of the comments that came from the peer review, was to simplify the facade. Instead of having so many pushes and pulls with the balconies and bay windows, it creates a simple plane with the terracotta panel system, and then the balconies above read more strongly as more like punched balconies as opposed to projected balconies. So overall, the concept was to organize the building. We have like a base zone, which would be the stone terracotta cladding coming to the ground, a sort of middle zone, which would be this projected wall, which will have a simple expression with the balconies at the seventh and eighth floor, and then a top zone, which is more lighter and transparent. So you get a base, a middle, and a top in it, and it lightens up as you get to the top. So these, and I won't go into too much detail, but these are the color and materials that we proposed, that were in the basket, that we passed around. And the intent is to use the terracotta colors, like on R1, a light sienna color together with a terracotta taupe color on this. taupe color on this projected wall, so that there's a compatibility between the colors, but there's some interest in the color palette, so as we move around, we introduced the terracotta color, like this is on the Sierra Avenue elevation, which faces Sarah Avenue and the office building, and this is the facade that faces El Camino with the Sarah Station sign, this is the full facade of R2, if you took away R1, if R1 weren't built first, you would see this as R2, and what you see is the break between the two buildings and the courtyard between the two, and then if you went on California Drive, along the side that goes towards BART, that would be the elevation, you'll notice that the terracotta color does come down to the ground, their transparency at the ground level, where there will be some resonance, the facade of R2 that faces the Hemlock neighborhood, if you took away R1, you would see the full R2 facade, and then, again, the introduction of the terracotta panel system, landscaping on the terrace deck, and then walking at the pedestrian level, trying to focus in on some of the elements of how those colors will be integrated into the panel system of the R1 and R2 building, this is the, this is almost as if you step right past where the Bronze Kids were welcoming you from El Camino, you would step into this Sarah Plaza, Gateway Plaza area, that leads to the courtyard between R1 and R2, and in the middle would be the environmental art, that sculpture piece that Paul had talked about, yet to be designed, then this is the view between the C1 building, the commercial building, and the R2 building, and the water feature straight ahead, and the introduction of the terracotta panel system, we wanted to keep the ground level kind of light, to showcase the storefronts, but we introduced the panel system as part of the facade, to, again, bring some color and texture to the building, this is a close-up of that zone between the two, so the water feature would be a significant feature here, as a passageway to BART, a mid-block passageway, and then this is like the terminating view of Sarah Street, where, as you, you know, a very pedestrian-oriented street, with the storefronts along the right side of the work-liv units, and the retail along the edge, and then, of course, this terminates and turns into the alley that leads out to El Camino, and of course, the focal point will be the R1 building, so thank you, that sort of runs through a lot of the issues that we heard from you, we heard from the Planning Commission, we heard from the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, should we go to the public comment now? Okay, if any members of the public would like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip and come to the podium. Okay, let's start with former Mayor Colpietro.
Thank you very much, just a little anecdote here, I noticed when it came to the position of the lettering of, of the signs, that everybody turned around, and, or either looked at me, and we were all kind of smiling inside, but I just want to let you know, the day after that meeting, the San Mateo County Sheriff came out with a press release indicating a focus on distracted driving, so, but anyway, when I did look at this, before the meeting started, and during the meeting, and watching it on the big screen and the smaller screen, I just have to say how impressed I was with all of the improvements that were made, and in the amount of time that it took, so that the, they could be here again tonight, and I was just thrilled, because there's a lot of freshness and brightness, and I was so happy to hear that the, that the signage boards inside the lobby were going to be ongoing changes, and not just something there forever, because there's so much dramatic artwork in what has been displayed, and it won't be boring for people, they'll want to come in and sit down and watch it over, and I was happy with the bright colors that they used, and inside the buildings, and a large reflection of red, which is always something that's very lucky and a very safe color, so, from my heart to Vince, you and your team, thank you, thank you, thank you so much, and to our city council members, I know everybody has their own opinion of what they like and what they don't like, and as you talked before, there needs to be compromise, so hopefully tonight, we could get through this, and bring these people on their way to do their jobs, so that in turn, the city will benefit for the beginning of the construction of our new community center, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Colpietro, next is Rob Decote.
Well, it's almost morning, good evening, council members and Mayor Lee on the phone, this is just a quick one to kind of encapsulate sort of what we probably just need to tell you verbally, so, you know, after what felt like a long, long period of time, and with a lot of discussions, and between the city staff, and the applicant, and ourselves, and the neighborhood, you know, we did reach a compromise, that compromise is documented in the conditions that the city staff prepared, and is probably part of your design packet, so I felt it appropriate, since that's been sort of the subject of discussion in each of our times with you, to address you all formally, and let you know that there has been a compromise reached, and everything that was reached and agreed to is in that document that the city has in their possession now, so, that's it, we'll keep it short, thanks.
Thank you, next Christina Decote.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Lee on the phone, and city staff, everyone here tonight, and the public watching, I also want to just thank everyone, this has been a really long haul, and it's been very stressful, and it's been countless hours away from family time, been very personal, but as a neighborhood, we came together, the applicant has done a really good job, as of late, in getting a lot of concerns addressed, so we appreciate that, and we appreciate everybody's time, and the conditions are before you, so thank you very much.
Good, thank you, and last but not least, Constancia Rodriguez.
Good evening, council members, good morning, Mayor Lee, and good evening to everybody, it's been a whole, long process, and I think we've reached a point where in, all parties are quite satisfied with the results, and so I'd just like to extend a heartfelt thanks to the developers, the architectural firm, the commission, council members, and especially the staff, who really did a lot of the brunt work and mediation between the Hemlock Avenue neighborhood, and the development that will be rising on that side, suffice to say, I have really no comments to make on, on the new building, I think after, after the whole process is made, we have a very good-looking building compared to the original proposed building, and so, we're, suffice to say, we're pretty happy with the end result, just two things that I want to bring to the table, it's just a reminder, it's been documented in the previous meetings, that the, we're so happy that the balconies have been taken out in the first six, seven floors, and there's lesser balconies now facing the neighborhood, and through that process, I don't know if you remember, but we remember that it was made aware to us that the whole intention of those balconies are viewing balconies, and their sole intention of putting grills, bicycles, patio tables, or whatever on those, and my understanding is that will be in the lease agreement, once it's, once it's written out, and I just want to make sure it's not lost in the details, and I just don't know if, it was made aware that there's a San Mateo proposal, I don't know if it's pushing through, but they're saying that San Carlos is actually weighing consideration of multifamily dwellings, multifamily buildings, to actually ban smoking in those buildings, for the sake of the children especially, that will be living in those, so I don't know if we want to be proactive, and kind of like, do the same thing, and, oh, the, I, there was a news article that San Carlos is actually looking into putting multifamily residences under a no-smoking area, so that, and I don't know if we want to be proactive in that, because that would also kind of like, take care of the, the smoking fear that we have, but anyway, well, those are the only two things, other than that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr.-
And have a good evening.
And we did have a grand jury report on that, and I believe we do have an ordinance coming, I don't know if it's at the next meeting, or the first one in May?
Correct.
Okay, so that will be, that will be in place well before these developments are built, okay, and I don't know, for the record, if we have to do announced ex parte communications?
If you had the information.
Okay.
If you've already disclosed any of it.
Okay, I don't think we were ever asked to disclose for this project, only for TOD2 in previous meetings?
Your vote project.
Okay, well, I'll just, okay, I'll just announce, I did meet with Mr. Muzi once in January, and I believe we were not asked to, ever to disclose that, only, I think only during the first public hearing for TOD2, as I recall, but I'm just putting that out there, and I did meet twice with Mr. Decote, once in January, I believe, and once last week, are there any others that would like to disclose?
I had messages back and forth with Mr. Decote, but we didn't speak, so.
Okay.
I've had a couple of conversations with Rob Decote, and a couple of conversations with Christina Decote, a lot of voicemail passing in the wind, and Mr. Riganello, I know we spoke a couple of times, but I think it was talking about Reno, so I can't specifically other, he checks in with me to see if I've got the information I need.
I had a conversation with Rob Decote as well, and I think it was maybe twice, because we ran in, I ran into you at Fiddler's.
Okay, and Mayor Lee, any communications with the developer, or any other interested parties?
Um, no, I didn't have any, I asked with Mr. Decote a few times, but, I haven't had any applications with the applicant.
Okay, thank you, okay, so I believe we had consensus earlier, would like to begin with the C1 building, and any comments, or suggestions, or concerns on that building, you know, Mayor, Councilmember Papin had made a comment about the "Welcome to Millbrae" sign at the corner there, any other comments, questions, suggestions on C1, Councilman Schneider?
Just quickly, and we're not doing lighting, or we're going to do lighting later? I liked, it took me a while to figure out the lighting scheme on the ground, but I like the LED lighting, when I was visually trying to walk between C1 and R2, it looks like maybe long-term, there could be some fun little art things, or if you're putting bollards there, what I talked about earlier, the concern about drivers doing bad things, there are some very artistic bollards, and a good example is Mitchell Park in Palo Alto, doesn't have to look like that, but gives you an idea, but I wondered, that space, I love the plantings, I actually really like everything about it, the space right there on the ground floor of C1, what is that purpose, is that going to be an open area, is that part of the retail right there?
The ground floor is commercial space, so it's either going to be commercial office, or it could be commercial retail, but it'll be fully commercial.
Okay, I just wasn't quite sure when I was looking through, trying to look through the window, so I'm perfectly happy with C1, actually, and this is the first time that I've seen the curve reflected in R2 as well, it was a really nice job reflecting the curve in R2 and in R1, and hopefully it'll be as obvious when it's all built, I love the curves.
Okay, thank you, other comments or questions on C1?
Yeah.
Mayor Lee?
Are we talking, have we gone through the office building already, because I haven't the chance to talk about that.
We're starting with the office building, so if you have any comments or questions on the office building now, would be the-
Yeah, I'm just worried about the traffic pattern in California, and the elimination of the drop-off and pickup bus, or the buses on Long Side Caltrains.
I think Mayor Lee, maybe, is he referring to what happens across Linden at the BART drop, is that what Mayor Lee's referring to?
Referring to the BART pickup and drop-off lot there, on California?
On the Caltrain side, on the Caltrain side.
Right, on Long California Drive?
Um-
Is that going to be eliminated?
I think that's our property you're talking about, that, the city's property is where the drop-off is, not where this developer's property is.
Correct, that would not be impacted by this project, we would just need to find, we would just need to find a way to connect to the California Drive extension, which, in the current configuration, would not connect.
And we are diligently working on that.
That's not what I see, I want to see some clarification from staff in the next meeting, because that's not what I see in these drawings.
What are you looking at right now, is there a slide number, or page number?
Uh, hang on, my internet's slow now.
They went to sleep.
Well, you guys go on, anyway, we'll come back to that.
Yeah.
There was a drawing with the building, the office building, and the, and the roads, not that one, not page six, it hasn't showed arrow, had arrows, showing the traffic patterns.
Are you referring to page four, Mayor?
No, well, maybe, oh, can you scroll to page four, because I don't see page four in this.
Mayor Lee, the entire presentation is not on the screen, only just the points we were discussing brought up at the last study sessions?
Oh, I see, yeah, I'm having trouble with my internet right now, so I can't, can't pull up the drawing.
Mayor Lee, if I could clarify, actually, the drop-off is in a prior packet, and it's really on the other side of Linden, so it is on the city property and not this property.
And our civil engineer, Roland, is here from BKF.
Mayor Lee, I'd like to-
Are you realigning California Drive, is it going to be realigned?
Mayor Lee, this is Roland Haga with BKF Engineers, we're the civil engineers on this, our project abuts a right-of-way that is controlled by JPB, Caltrain, and the BART and Caltrain station, we do have one drop-off, we do have one drop-off, if you look at the realignment of California Drive in the northern direction, there's a drop-off, and we're matching the improvements along the BART and Caltrain station sides, and introducing one new bus drop-off, or multimodal drop-off area, so, it is correct, we do have a drop-off there, I do want to caution everybody that these are BART and Caltrain facilities, they have their own lighting plan, and they're under their control, we don't control what happens on that side of the right-of-way, we are asking permission to build California within the purview of our project, plus the public right-of-way that abuts their facility, so I just want to clarify that, there are other drop-offs along Sarah Avenue for Lyft, Uber, in two locations, and parking along that driveway, all other drop-off areas are within the existing parking lot, which is under city control, which will be unchanged in this, in this plan, until a future California extension goes through that area, hopefully that clarifies.
Yeah, I, okay, so I look at page, let's see, page four, right?
I believe that page is bicycle connectivity?
I don't have a page four.
Looks like those are bike lanes, that it's showing.
There's connecting Millbrae on top, you have the same one, the one on, that's included on Agenda Online. on Agenda Online.
Mayor Lee, what exactly is your question? Just so that we're able to answer it.
Okay, so Page 4, is everybody on Page 4 now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you see the blue line, the blue dotted lines?
Those are bike lanes.
Oh, that's bike lanes, okay.
And I believe the circulation was already determined with the site development plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. There, I actually did have...
You're no longer going to, there's no road going behind on California Drive any longer?
No, there is.
California Drive will be a two-lane road with bike lanes in each direction.
So that bike lane does not, those blue lines does not represent vehicular traffic, right? Car traffic?
It's the same street. It, it, it does, but it particularly in this map points out where the bike lanes would be. But yes, there would be vehicular traffic on that street as well.
And that is the realignment of California Drive that we're currently working on?
So that's not clearly delineated on the drawings, because somebody please make sure that's clearly stated where the traffic's going, because it's not. It's confusing.
So Mayor Lee, you are correct. In that drawing, at that scale, it's really about the multimodal types of transit, but there are, there are clearly delineated drawings. There's a section, and I just don't, and if you have the set, we can, we'll get the page number for you. Page?
Page 6.
There's a section as well.
Or City Manager?
Yes.
When the actual road is designed, we've already approved it, does it come back to council? Does it come back as a Public Works update? So, I mean, we're not, this is, this is it. Yay.
Yeah, you've approved it, but the final design that is not part of this project, that's off-site improvement, that the applicant has said that they would build if we acquire the title to it, which we're working on right now, yes, that, that design will come back to City Council for final approval.
It will?
Yes.
It will. Okay, so...
Not here, but on the city property?
On the city property, south of that realignment, we'll come back to the City.
Mayor Lee, can we stick to the buildings? It's getting really late.
Well, it just, the building's impacting traffic. I think we need to discuss it because I, you know, I, you know, so you can, we need to talk about the building, but we need to come back to the realignment of California Drive. Can we put that on the list then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, I have, I really have no comment on the office building.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Lee. Any, and just, if you had a question about the, where the, exactly the street and the bike lanes would be, Page 64 has a good rendering showing the bike lanes on either side of the, of the street going around the corner of where California Drive would be extended. Okay. Any additional comments or questions on the office building? I think it looks very nice and...
Do we move approval?
I think it's a great design, so I'm willing to do that.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Let's move approval so we can...
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin and a second from Councilwoman Oliva to approve the design review of the office building, just the building itself. Okay? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Halliburton?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, should we go on to R1 or R2? Or take them together?
Yeah.
Let's start with R1.
What's the pages on?
Did we decide we're going to go past 11?
Yes, we had already previously decided we'd go until midnight.
We actually didn't take a vote, but...
We had consensus to go till midnight.
Losing again.
I mean, 3:00 in the morning for me, thank you.
I know, I'm sorry.
I voted with you, Mr. Mayor.
Beginning on Page 38 in the larger set.
38, okay, it started at 38.
Page 38 of the document, please? Okay, Councilwoman Schneider?
Okay, on R1, I love everything. I have one concern, and it's how active the use is, or how active it looks on the corner of El Camino Real and the New California Drive. With the new balconies, I love the balconies going up in front, but that corner seems kind of dull. And I, I don't want to hold off getting R1 approved, but I don't know if there's a way that we can have staff and the applicant perhaps look at a way to make that a little more engaging. So if you go to the other side of the building, where you've got the plaza, it's really lovely. And you've got tables set out there, so it's going to be very active. But this corner just seems dull, and I hate to have, after all this work, a corner that doesn't look as exciting as it could be, or as active as it could be. And you see it on, and you've got drawings, one drawing has an overhang, another drawing has it completely overhung. I'm not quite sure, City Manager Williams and I were trying to just brainstorm ways that might make it a little bit more exciting. But I leave that up to you all.
Would it help you to put a bench or something on the corner?
You know, I like their benches in the plaza, the wooden benches, that's an idea. I thought if it was a complete overhang and you've got all these other green roofs, maybe you could do a green roof right there.
Green roofs concern me.
Vice Mayor, if I may, we were also thinking that maybe an art piece, you know, right out on the prominent corner could, could work there, but...
And I admit, the artist that you said that you worked with, that does the metal sculptures, Mr. Khan, he does some really fun stuff, that maybe there's something in a smaller scale that might just put a little sparkle in that area. I know that costs more, but this is the corner that everybody's going to see, and, and after all of this time and effort, let's...
So I think, just for clarification, there is, along on the El Camino side of that corner, there is a retail frontage, but it doesn't go, it doesn't wrap around the corner towards California Drive, correct?
Correct, yeah, that floor plan.
I wanted to bring up this image, it's, it was in the previous packet, or in the long packet. This, this will be an activated storefront right at the corner of El Camino and California, and it does wrap all across the front, 20 feet high.
Can you say for the mayors, what page are you on?
54.
In the big packet, okay.
Yeah.
What page was that?
54.
54, the big packet. Oh, our new big packet.
Okay, I don't know what's a big package, okay?
I assume you...
It's on the website as well?
Yeah. It's an image that we've shown before.
It's not 54 on mine.
Yeah, it is.
What's that?
That says 54 to me.
54, yes.
It just doesn't...
I mean, sorry, yeah, 54, yeah.
April 9th. It's in the April 9th.
April 9th. It's on the screen, if he can see the screen. But basically, it's the image we showed before, which is a 20-foot-high, very active storefront. Intent would be some kind of food service café, and it does wrap around into that courtyard, which is the next image.
I think one of the things that is probably not quite as clear graphically is, is that when Bill's team redesigned the facades of the building, they used what's called SketchUp, and it's a program that doesn't have the same kind of render quality. And so the images you see here on the screen of the Little Paseo, the images of El Camino are done in a different kind of render style, so that they have people and life and activity. This is more of what it will feel like.
What's the pie hole?
The what? Oh, that's, that's a, that's a great pie place, makes great apple pie, yeah.
I look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Oliva?
So, on Page 43, that same corner on the big package?
On the big package, yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll go to 43.
The sketching?
Yes.
What is that green wall made out of?
There's, oh, that green wall, that's just, again, a graphic in SketchUp. That is part of the extension of the, the screen wall between the Hemlock neighborhood and California Drive. It is actually going to drop down to maybe only about four feet high when it gets to this corner, because we need visibility turning the corner. So it's just...
That was my question.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
That was my question. So it's four feet high?
Yeah.
Drive-through.
I am concerned about these balconies with trees on them here. How viable are those? Are they in planter boxes or movable?
The balconies themselves, with the little greenery, those would be planter boxes hanging over with, you know, flowering plants or green year-round. The large terrace, when we did set back R2 as a large terrace, we had the opportunity to actually plant larger trees in pots, probably on a deck, but to give more screening to the neighbors in their concerns about looking up at the upper balcony. So this is a, the design intent, it obviously needs to be vetted through the final design with the landscape implementation. But we do have that opportunity here, which we think is a great opportunity.
My only comment is, I wish it was darker, but you worked it out with the neighbors. To me, it would have been more impactful if it was darker, but...
Are you talking about the sort of grayish terracotta?
But if you worked it out with the neighbors...
I could kind of see it both ways on that. I had a comment about the Sarah Station sign, and we could debate whether the letters should be vertical or horizontal, but I think regardless, I think it would be more attractive if it were more of like a marquee sign sticking out as opposed to just flat along the wall.
That would be a possibility, too. We sort of designated this sort of zone for that sign because it has the most exposure to El Camino. A blade sign could do the same. You just have to see how a blade sign is seen from two directions, or if it has two sides.
Well, the way you see it now, I don't think you would really see it from El Camino.
You see it as you approach.
You see it as you approach from, from the, going, going south. Probably not so much going north, because the balconies kind of block it in a way.
Yeah, it would have to be two-sided, though. You'd have to be able to see it from two sides. And the only thing there, we'd also have to be careful about the lighting of it, so it doesn't become a, you know, an obstruction for the residents.
The balcony would see the edge of the sign then.
But that's a possibility. I guess we'd have to, you know, if, if the sign location works, you know, as an approved sign location, the sign type could be reviewed.
All right, any additional comments on building R1?
Did you propose anything that was somewhat darker here as far as the tones? I'm just thinking a little more, because you've got the dramatic office building there, and it's going to be kind of near the BART station. Would that work at all?
We think that, we've been switching from what we had before, which was the white metal to a terracotta.
Done an amazing amount of work.
Wrong direction. And we did look at different colors. We felt that the, the R1 building would have one palette, which we went lighter, and the R2 building, we felt would go darker. It has a darker terracotta color, as you'll see. So, you know, we wanted to create some variety, but, you know, using the similar material, but get a blend of colors. But we echo, on the Sarah Street side, we echo the office with the glazing of the curved facade.
One thing you need to be very careful of, and that is, you need to look at the box of colors on, on the DIs there. Computer coloring is a mess. I mean, it just, it does not, it does not render properly. So look at the samples.
I think, Councilman, you're looking for sort of a contrast between the two colors, something darker to kind of contrast a bit more.
Am I talking to this?
Sure.
A little richer, these seem to be. My jacket's not, it's part of the building.
Yeah, but the way you've displayed those colors out, the, from my, from this area, it looks green, but it's kind of a taupe, is that what you call it?
Taupe, yeah.
The taupe is going with the sandy, and the terracotta is going with the one Gina, next to your left hand on the edge, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, the taupe is going with a light sienna on the left, and the sand color and the darker terracotta's are going north. No, the other way, yeah. As they were laid out, yes. Yes, yes. Yes. And of course, again, these things are, in any construction design, there'll be a final selection, there'll be a mock-up, they'll, you know, you have to see it in, not in this kind of light, you have to see it in natural light, you have to see it in shadow, you have to see it in shade. And that's what we go through our whole process during the final design documents, is a, is a mock-up, that a final, final, final color. Different suppliers have different versions of that same color.
I think darker here would be my preference.
You can see on this, on this facade, this terracotta system, which you see, there's, this is an example of how it's installed, that's a darker color, similar to the one that's in the facade.
Maybe on the elevation, you can show them, because I think the lighter color's on the base of the building.
Yes, yeah.
So it's not mixed on the elevation on the upper floors.
Well, the, the, the light sianas, we're calling it on R1, is, as you read it on this elevation, it rides up the building, it's on the, is also at the lower level, yeah.
Lower level what?
The ground level. On R1, this is R1, so that, that color is, rides up the building.
You have four sides of the building, so I think maybe if you explain how those go together at the base.
Yeah, so see, this, like I said, this is the terracotta color, the darker terracotta color, what, in this case, on R1, we're calling it a light sienna, but it's a light terracotta. If you look at a terracotta selector, there's probably a dozen versions of terracotta. So that color is used as unifying element on this, and then the projected facade is the, which occurs only on the, on the California Drive side, is the taupe color, which you can see better in this rendering here.
Renderings are always difficult here. I just think it'd be a richer building with a more impactful, you've got your tones there, which is fine, but a little richer, darker quality to them, I think, would be my preference.
Can I offer something there?
Please, go right ahead.
If you look at R2 and R1, the two renderings, if you look at them, R2 looks a little richer, but it also has...
What page are you on, why don't you say?
Sorry. 48 and 50, if you look at them like I'm looking at them. And you have the richer R2, and I think it has to do with, like, what was discussed with regards to lighting and such.
Right.
So one is looking at it at a different time of the day, comparatively to this is, am I right?
Yes, one is in sunshine, one is in shade, yeah.
So you're going to get the richer tones when it's not so sunshine-bright out.
So on Page 48 there, is that a photograph then and not a rendering? The smaller, the live-work unit?
Yeah, that's a photograph of, of a building that we did in San Francisco.
And those are the same colors you're wanting to use here?
It's similar, yes, yeah. It has a richer color to it, you know. And again, the thing that's about this material, it has texture, too. Again, we're not talking metal panel that's glossy. This is going to have a matte finish, a texture, and so, and then the, just because it's a panel system, you'll see it...
What do you, what do you mean by texture?
It's like a, terracotta has, has, what do you call it, like a sand finish, almost like a...
More porous, like more of a...
Like a brick, yeah.
There's no discernible pattern, right? There's no discernible pattern.
Doesn't appear to be, no.
No.
Question, though, on Page 48, in the photograph of a building that you've already done?
Yes.
It has variation in color, and I really like that.
Yes.
Are you saying that the materials being, that we're choosing tonight would have that variation?
You can get that variation, but it'd be a natural variation, yeah.
Because I, I think that gives a little bit of, of...
I mean, just like the brick wall behind you, even though that's not... I mean, just like the brick wall behind you, even though that's not what we're proposing, but just like brick, it's a terracotta.
There's variation.
Yeah, there's variation.
So I, I like that.
Yeah.
What I'm having problems with this building is, I mean, it's a great improvement from the last building, but it's still a big boxy building. You know, you could put, you could just put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a boxy building.
I don't think it's that bad.
You need some, a lot, you need a lot more articulation, and, you know, you have the same pattern, you have the same, you know, I mean, you did a lot better, I'll give you that, but it's still very, very boxy.
I... Mr. Mayor, do you have that last packet, page forty-eight there?
And forty-nine, it, it really shows quite a bit of variation.
I don't really like the one on forty-nine, but the forty-eight one...
Forty-nine is R2, so...
Well, if you flip it, if you flip on the, what you're seeing on the screen, I see what you see on the screen.
Okay.
What are you referring to?
Yeah, well, I have page forty-eight on the screen now, and I think they're referring to the, the picture in the right corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, what about it?
That looks pretty good.
Yeah, that's one element though. I'm talking about the overall effect.
I tend to dis...
If you look, if you look at the elevation, looking down, if you look at the sides, it looks like a big box, it's a huge box.
What would you suggest?
Well, look at the pictures I sent you. Look at the articulations, you know, it's a box, but it has a lot of different architectural features, it makes a lot more interesting.
I didn't get any pictures, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, where'd it go? Hang on.
I sent it to, I sent it to Councilwoman Pappin, I don't know how to get it to send it to the rest of the council and see. Maybe you can email it to staff and they can put it on the screen.
His example has very specific bay windows, square, not curved, but bay windows. The bay windows are a lighter color, the back of the walls are a darker color, it's, it's a different style building. Not to take away from the mayor while Gina's showing that, but on page forty-seven, where we're looking at the perspective that you'd see from Sarah Avenue...
Uh, yes.
That doesn't have a lot of color, or am I just not reading?
No, and it, as I mentioned, it's, the intent is that it is the one facade that kind of is like a receiving facade that terminates Sarah, and it, the curvature was trying to relate to the office building as a composition. If you go back to, let me go back...
So that's what I can't, the picture on forty-seven doesn't show that curve, so it just looks very flat.
So if you see page thirty-nine, and I think thirty-nine sort of explains the overall composition of this soft curve and this soft curve, kind of carry the, the character of the Sarah Street and from the office building, sort of relating it to it in scale, the height of this and the height of the office building curve. Yeah, you can see it here as well. So they act as a composition all along Sarah Street that you'll see from El Camino.
I mean, if I were to see it...
Well, I like the curve, curve effect.
Did you try any renderings? Did you try any with staff of putting a little bit of color maybe at the end closer to El Camino real?
Uh, well, we turned a corner, actually, what we do have is the, the vision glass, and then we have what we, we call a fridded spandra glass, which is a, again, an echo a little bit of the office building, not as sophisticated as the office building, but it has a, a bluish-gray tone to it that you can, you can see in, in these elements here, these vertical elements.
Page thirty...
But the ground, the ground level is this, is a combination of storefront with glass and stone and, and the terracotta tile that carries all along the ground level. Because these are not standalone buildings. I mean, it is a composition of buildings, the, the total development wants to, you know, be, be one development.
So no other comments on R1? I think the...
Mr. Mayor, can you offer any further specifics you'd like to see there?
I don't, well, first of all, I told you, I don't, I'm not going to design this project on a dais or over the phone, but I'm telling you, it looks like a big box, if that's what you want, a big box, you know, go at it, but it could use a lot more, a lot more architectural features. That's why I'm asking for like different patterns, and if I, you know, the example I sent you, it's not just bay windows, but it's the fact that they created some interesting architectural effects that, that breaks up the big box look. It's just, if you look overall, it's just a big box.
I, I might suggest something here that I just recently saw downtown here, on your, your edges, and I'm trying to, there was a building on Franklin, I think it was actually one of the new hospital buildings, it's just, as far as the edges, they've kind of angled the panels, and I was hoping I could find it here to show you. It was really very, very intriguing, and it took some, it added such a unique feature here.
One of the elements of the R1 building is the, the curve, when it comes to the corner, does create a different kind of edge, it's not a ninety-degree edge. And, and in response to Mayor Lee's comments, we do have, and we have always continued to have bay windows and balconies as part of the texture of the building, as you can see on the El Camino facade, the layering of the projected balconies along the Sarah Street side where McCursor is, and as you transition over to the R2 building, we have a combination of bay windows and, and balconies, so it does have that...
I understand, but they're, they're so symmetrical that they, they have the effect of making one big slap, one big wall. They're all very symmetrical, and it has the effect of looking like a big wall. So if you like broke them up and had staggered balconies or something, then that might make it a little bit less boxy. They're all lined, all the balconies are all lined up, they're all like straightened up and down, and so they're not, it's not, there's no, there's no architectural, they look, they all look very, very monoch, monochrome.
Well, part of the planning of the residential is to have an efficiency in the floor plan so that the units do stack and not complicate the, the plumbing and the structure.
Well, the outside could look different, but the inside could be all the same. If you want to keep the same inside, that's fine, the outside doesn't have to, have to look the same.
Mayor, do you think maybe it, you're not looking at it three-dimensionally? Because I, I could see how you could look at the piece of paper and see that it's flat because it is a square, but yet if you look at, if you look at where it pops out in about seven different spots.
It, it pops out in huge segments, which makes it linear, makes it very look linear. That's the problem. I, I, looking at the picture forty-two right now, as an example, you know, you put a few green spots, but if you look at the whole overall, you see all the balconies all line up. They all line up and they're all linear, so basically you have the effect of creating an effect that is very linear, very flat.
I would only say that that side has been well thought out by staff, by the residents on Hemlock. If the, residents on Hemlock are happy, I would hate to open that up. To me, it's fine. The residents are okay, the agreement is there, the other side is a little less colorful, but I see the curve.
Yeah, Hemlock, Hemlock's nothing, you know, we're not disputing what Hemlock want, they're, they're okay with what's going on. My point is architecturally, it's just, it's just a big box, it's very linear, and I think that, you know, it could use a lot more architectural features to make it a lot more interesting, but if you, if you want a big box, that, you know, you can put your name on it, it's fine with me.
Okay, um, yeah, the, the, I tend to disagree. I think the, the side facing Hemlock looks pretty good and has been worked out, a lot of arduous details with the, the neighbors there. I tend to agree with Councilwoman Schneider that maybe on the Sarah side, maybe a bit more color could make it look a, a little bit warmer, it really only has the one, I, I do like the, the curved walls there, and the, the terracotta finish sort of on the, on the right side of the, of the image there. But I think a, a bit more color could make it a little bit warmer feeling.
Does anybody know the app where you get the visual of this building? No, not that, I'm trying to show an example. I know Google does it somehow, but...
Oh, you go to Google Map and then just go from map to earth.
Okay, Google Earth.
Well, you can go to Google Earth.
They don't, yeah. Now, there's an opportunity for more terracotta on this facade. We were trying to, again, tie it back to the office a little bit more. I think you'll find that it is a very sophisticated connection between the two with the fridded, these are fridded glass rails that also could have, are landscaping on the edges.
Perhaps closer to, to El Camino there, there could be an opportunity for some more color.
Yeah, right here, yeah, on the corner, yeah.
Remind me, years, it's been years, you guys, when you first brought C1, the glass, as you moved from the building, changed colors. Are you saying that this glass in that area is similar to that in that depending on where you are, it's going to have a slightly, it's going to have some movement in it?
It won't be as sophisticated as the office building where the patterning is sort of like a...
Right.
A rhythm going across.
The patterning that we saw that also will help birds.
But this would be a, this would be a pattern that you would see from different angles, but it's not going to, the pattern itself is not going to change, it's going to be a single pattern. But I think what Vice Mayor Holiver's saying is, you know, maybe there are opportunities here to add a little bit more, to hold, turn the corner with terracotta, you know, give it a more of a strength at that point, and then turn into the more transparent center zone.
I think it would anchor the two sides of the building, even though it, it's not completely symmetrical.
Right, right, right.
But it still adds a little bit there and a little splash of color on that side.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other comments on R1?
Do we motion? Or do you want to wait and do it with R2?
Okay, let's, let's go on to R2. Councilman Pappin, you're looking for some other examples?
Yeah, like...
Okay, and it sounds like we, it sounds like the architect would like to make some revisions on, as has been discussed, so we may need to bring that back at another date. So let's go...
If you're not going to change the building structure, I'd like to request that there be some sort of pattern or texture on, on the, on the terracotta parts, so it doesn't look at least one, like one big shiny piece of, of stone.
But it's not going to be shiny. I mean, unfortunately, he can't see the, the material, but the material is, is a brickish material, it's not shiny. With regard to the added color at the corner, I would ask that rather than require us to come back, if what you want is two more lines going down between the windows on the, the corner there, just make that a condition that we have to use the same vertical lines, but put it at the corner.
I'd be okay with one. Or to whatever staff and you think looks good once you've had that color, it doesn't have to be two. I'm happy with making it a condition of approval. Yeah, and let them...
Councilmember Schneider.
Let's...
Yeah, so do we need a motion?
Reference to the council to...
What was that? To add a line of color on...
To add additional color along the Sarah facade.
Along here, somewhere along here.
At the corner of Camino and Sarah.
Yeah, Camino and Sarah, yeah.
Just to warm it up.
Little splash of color there.
Yeah.
But leave it to staff to decide how you want to actually do it.
Incorporate that, yeah.
On page forty-one, you can, are you looking up further?
I'm still trying to find this thing here, it keeps shutting me out.
So, you know, on page thirty-nine or...
Yeah, forty-one is a good example, right there. There's sort of one line, or at least it looks like there's one line right up the middle.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, do you want a motion? Do you want a little more time?
Let's give Councilwoman Pappin a little bit more time to look up what she was trying to look up, but let's move on to...
To R2.
R2. Okay, any questions or comments on the R2 building?
Forty-nine.
Oh, it's a lot of different pages.
Starts at forty-nine.
Overall is thirty-nine, I mean, the overall views are on thirty-nine and forty and forty-one.
For R2?
Well, the overall view, the, the overall views, you know, the composition of the buildings.
So what I'd like, what I'm seeing, like, and I love the way it's spread out in the book, is because you see the glass, and then you see the glass with warmth, and then you see it much warmer. So from an aerial point of view, not just the building as a box, but, you know, all the different colors, colors are flowing very nicely and, you know, the...
Yeah.
No, I like it.
There's some more renderings on page fifty-eight of the Sarah side.
Yeah, the, the more developed renderings are on fifty, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and then sixty-one.
Sixty-one, sixty-three, around California Drive, the corner there.
Yes.
I have no comments for R2.
Mayor Lee, do you have any comments on R2, or questions or comments?
You're just, you're moving too fast on this one.
Oh, sorry.
Where are you going?
Oh, no, I was just, look, I'm on fifty, I just wanted to point out that the pattern on the right is, you know, we're concerned about these terracotta panels being big solid panels, but they can have this kind of coursing that gives a little bit more scale to it.
Well, they will have that.
They will have that, at a necessity, yeah.
You do a better job breaking up the balcony effect, so it doesn't look like it's one, you know, I mean, even though it's a huge wall, go back to fifty, please.
Again, you're looking at a straight-on elevation there, and there are balconies and bay windows all, all along that entire elevation, so let me, I was just trying to find a three, three, three-D view of that. I think there's...
Mayor Lee? If you look at page fifty...
Yes?
If you look at, at page fifty, it has, it actually has balconies kind of changing, they're not all in a straight line, if I'm looking at this one.
Well, no, I, I made that point. I'm agreeing with that point.
Oh, oh, okay.
Breaking up these.
Yeah, so on page twenty-two, which is the California Drive elevation from a different angle from the BART station, it's sort of, it shows how the, the balconies and bay windows give texture and depth to that facade. This one hasn't been quite updated in terms of the terracotta color, but it gives you the scaling of the facade.
Twenty-two, I think.
Twenty-two, yeah.
So what Bill's sharing is...
Yeah, I like this, I like this side better. I think you should give the same, same type of treatment to the building.
Yeah, well, that texture is on the other facades, it's just that some of the renderings don't pick it up, yeah.
So Mayor Lee, I think part of the challenge is, is most of the new renderings, the new colors, were done in that software called SketchUp, and it's simply not as accurate a visualization as what you're seeing here, and these are just more sophisticated visuals. So in these kind of visuals, like the one on the screen, if you can see the image on the screen, which is page...
Twenty-two, yeah.
Twenty-two, they more accurately reflect the dimensionality of the building. They also have shadow and light on them that will actually be in reality, as opposed to the SketchUp model, which is just simple, really it's just a geometric render with color on it.
Okay, why don't you guys mock up a better drawing of our, the R2 building on El Camino? The El Camino building? So R1, I can't remember the number.
Yeah, R1, yeah.
It's three o'clock in the morning here, so...
Understood. I have a quick question on that page twenty-two that you're showing. It looks like the trim around the windows, the protruding windows, it looks a bit like a yellowish color.
Yeah, again, that, again, this rendering has not been updated to be more of the sand or...
Sort of a peach color.
Yeah, it'd be more of the sand color. Yeah, and this would have the darker terracotta as well.
Okay. Councilman Schneider, have a comment?
My question was more along Sarah, where the live-work units are. I was looking, again, this is lighting, and it looked like you reduced lighting there. Was that to make it a comfortable live-work space, or did I just not read it correctly?
It has the street standard lighting. It'll be purple.
So it'll be that tall type of lighting up there, but it just didn't show?
Yes, exactly.
I was looking for the blue and the green dots, and they didn't, they didn't sit there. Just wanted to make sure you could safely walk there at midnight or one o'clock in the morning.
Along Sarah, yes, this would be well, yeah.
Okay, any other comments on R2? Councilman Pappin?
Uh-uh.
Okay, should we take a motion now to approve the design for R2? Or is there anything outstanding that I missed?
I'm good.
Do you want, do you, have you, do you want to approve them together, or do you want to vote separately?
Let's do R2 first, because we're on it right now, I think there might still be a question or two about R1. Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Schneider and a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Can we have a roll call vote, please, on R2?
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
And this is the building on California?
Correct.
Yes.
Ah-ha. It passed unanimously.
Okay, shall we go back to R1? Councilman Pappin, are you finding what you need to find?
I think so. Took a minute.
And it's, okay.
This one here.
Pardon my reaching over.
No, wait, I'm trying to get closer here, how do you go down the block?
Um, oh, yours not touchscreen.
Hmm, this way?
There you go.
There it is. Okay, bring it back a little. It's this building here has really interesting, oops, where'd it go? There it is, kind of, okay. Ooh, wait! Some, who knows how to work this?
Now I think you gotta turn around and go back.
This way? We're looking for...
For some ideas.
Building, oh, that way, hang on.
I think it'd be bright, because the church was on the...
I think it's down the block.
Yeah, I think it's this way.
Okay, now I need to go this way. Who knows how to work this thing?
Can we talk about art well?
Sure, you want to go on to art?
Go ahead.
My understanding that art would be coming back to us, so we've kind of looked at the concepts, we're not, do we want to talk about the concepts? They're going to come back with final art at a later date, correct?
My suggestion to you is that you make the art, your approval of the art be a condition of approval of the art, okay, and that before issuance of building permit, okay, that you have an opportunity to look, see it and approve it. Yeah, because that's, it will take whoever, I'm looking for someone, and we are now in negotiations with someone who's going to build the project, okay? They're not here, I don't want to add another voice to the mix here. They're going to have to have input on this, and so they are going to be paying for it, and so they need to be participant in it, and we need to make contracts with the artists to do the work and to, you know, make it for the site. So, you know, the appropriate time for that would be just before issuance of the building permit to have that decided, and I have no problem, you know, coming back to the council to share that with you. I mean, that, it's public art, it should be, yeah.
So how did we do that last week for Republic Urban? What was the process that we used, and can we use the same process then?
If I may, if I may, so if you approve the art concept and the quality of art and the locations, then once the other applicant enters the equation and a artist is commissioned, that art will come back to you. This plan, if you adopt this tonight, becomes exhibit, a legal exhibit within your approval, so we will make sure that it adheres to the quality and the locations and the intent, and the specific art will come back to the council.
So I can say, from my perspective, I like all of your art examples I have the whole way along. If we're talking about the plaza between R1 and R2, fire pit versus that water fountain that's, I like the water, I like that water fountain, I like the way that goes, but, you know, it's all going to come back to us anyway. What I do like about that plaza is you gave an example of how it might have a festival of some kind, you put some canopies on, and I am hopeful that when this is done, and I asked the other project, too, is there a way to kind of dress up the outdoor spaces for specific events or specific holidays? If we use just standalone poles, we're in a windy zone, but as long as the buildings have some way to, to kind of, you know, decorate it for the holidays, we can try to help make it as active a space as possible collectively.
Agree.
Okay, other comments on art?
I'd like to move to approve the art at a later time.
Okay, I just had a comment, let's see. I do like the water feature concepts that we have in front of us, as well as the fire pits and/or water around the seating area. And, let's see, and the interactive art, I do like. I'm not particularly wild about the dancing kids. I don't know, it just doesn't really do that much for me, but I guess, it's page fifteen, fifteen.
You don't like dancing kids?
Not particularly. But I guess art is in the eye of the beholder.
I can say, some of the fun ones in bronze that I've seen are, like having a chess table with somebody playing chess, because I've seen a lot of people really having fun with that. Now, that's already been used, and you might be trying to find something unique, but something where you can play with them. There's another place where there's a man sitting on a bench, and I've seen more people from all over the world sit next to that man on the bench, and I can't tell you what city it's in, but, you know, they have a, it'd be a little bit harder to kind of run in and play with the kids, but, you know, I can see what the vice mayor is saying.
Yeah, I think, you know, some other examples...
Well, like the...
Lower left bank porch? Bigger bench?
Yeah, a bigger bench.
Yeah, and then also with, you know, TOD one, or sorry, TOD two, there were some examples of, you know, transportation-themed art, not saying we have to copy that, but transportation-themed, some animal themes, so that could be a whole nother debate.
One thing about this idea that public, children, it could be children, but it could represent the diversity of Millbrae in terms of the ethnic diversity, I mean, you could, there could be another theme to it that could be incorporated in this kind of sculpture.
There was a, there's a piece of sculpture at the Mountain View City Hall, between the city hall and the Performing Arts Center, and I hated it when they first did it. It's very colorful, it's metal, color-painted, but now I actually really love it, and it's a diversity of children and an older man playing an instrument because it's right in front of the Performing Arts Center. So, yeah, you can do a lot of, but it's very colorful.
Yeah.
So, as much as anything... So I guess what we would ask is, if we could ask that you would vote to approve the intent and locations of the art, because the art will come back to you, as Vince said, specifically from the building permits are issued, so there'll be an opportunity then to, you know, actually engage with the specific artists, because they've not been engaged. What we've done is propose basically gateways, thresholds, active zones, and kind of marquees. That was really the intent.
And I like some of these concepts on page fourteen, these Joan May pincas.
Uh-huh.
I find those to be very intriguing, interesting art.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen of the...
And the intent with those art examples is those art examples are environmental or experiential or kinetic or interactive, right? And so that's the intent.
Sorry, the large, you know, like the large skull here and these figures that are sort of abstract.
Oh, yes, yeah. He's a very famous artist.
So, do we have a consensus on the location of the art? And with the possibility of that one corner spot that we would have another piece given the consideration? Yeah.
Yeah, and I do like the idea of having a piece on the corner.
Can I add one more thing? I know at the break we talked about bollards to protect those areas from cars. Just consider that bollards can also be artful. Neither, none of those bollards are ones that the fire department's going to have to move to get to a location, so they're just, have some fun.
Okay, move to approve?
Motion, yeah.
What are we approving?
Did you make the motion? I'll second.
Art locations?
The location, not the actual art.
Yes.
Okay.
With the idea they're coming back before building permits, we'll just consider practice.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Can we just do an all-in-favor, aye, or do we need an actual roll call?
Because the mayor's...
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yeah.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, are we ready to go back to R1, or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Still going.
Did you find it?
Okay.
Do you have to vote on lighting tonight?
Okay, signage? Let's do signage.
I made one comment about a sign.
I agree with Councilwoman Pappin.
And we'll, we note that, so we'll actually activate and raise the welcome to Millbrae sign.
Oh, the welcome to Millbrae sign, and...
Well, it was the more, like, thicker...
Thicker lettering.
Thicker lettering, I thought it'd be more dramatic.
Or bold.
The example of the circuit sign, I think, is what was pointed out.
Okay. Do we also need to discuss the Sarah Station sign on the, on the side there? Or is that part of the R1 discussion? The large Sarah Station?
Why don't we separate that, if that's all right, make that an R1 piece?
Let's do that as part of R1. Okay, any other comments on the, on the signage?
No, that was, you did a really good job on that.
Okay. Have a motion?
A motion to approve signage as reflected in the documentation.
Second.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Okay.
All right.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, what else, lighting, or...
There were two lighting styles. Page seventy-four and seventy-five. Seventy-four has more of the, it has your patio furniture.
Maybe if there's, maybe if there's some small ones, we can do them kind of all in one motion, so maybe lighting, landscaping, I don't know what else there is. But let's go to lighting now. Sorry, you said seventy-one?
Seventy-four and seventy-five, lighting seventy-five.
Comments on the lighting, page seventy-five? Okay, should we do materials as well, page seventy-four?
Actually, let me ask a question on, on the outer side of R1 and R2, running in front of the outer side of C1, it says that the street, oh, that's provided by, that's going to come later then, correct? There's this light pink section, and it says that'll be consistent with the MSASP designs.
Exactly.
So we're really talking about the ones inside the project.
That's right.
Okay.
The rest of the lights that you see in that pink band that you're talking about are basically meeting the street, Millbrae Street standards.
Okay.
Okay, let's also take furnishings, materials and furnishings, page seventy-four.
In which case, since the vice mayor brought this up the last time, I have no problems with the types of containers you've chosen for solid waste, but there is a pretty much standard nomenclature used, which is one for landfill, one for compost, one for recyclables. And there's minimal, the containers that you've chosen here, there's minimal education on it, and the reality is to have a decent set of materials coming in, there's got to be a little bit of education, and I don't know how open you are to where you might put that. Sometimes it can be a label right on the flat, okay, because I see what you're doing, you're getting a lovely curvy shape to kind of go with the curves in the building, but need to have a little bit of education there.
So, and that's an excellent point. I think what would happen is, is depending upon the community, because not every community composts, but if Millbrae composts, and Millbrae does landfill, or Millbrae recycles, there can be an indicator sign on the front of each of them that says recycle, compost, and landfill.
I will tell you, as a state, if the country finally gets climate change on its list, one of the first things they will do is get organics out of landfills. So you need to have a place for them. It's the number-one methane eliminator.
Okay, any other comments on the furnishings? Materials and furnishings, page seventy-four? Mayor Lee?
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
No? Okay, okay, let's do, let's take landscaping as well, let's do them all, all three in one motion. So, page seventy-six and seventy-seven, the plantings and the trees? And I guess the roof terrace, page seventy-eight as well, roof terrace planting? Any comments on any of these?
Love them.
I love them.
All good? Okay, so let's take a motion then on all three of those items, the lighting, materials and, okay, we have, okay, I'll accept that as a motion from Mayor Lee for the materials and furnishings, lighting, and landscaping.
Yes, I'll amend my motion, make a second motion.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second that. All in favor, or, roll call, please?
Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Okay.
The motion passed unanimously.
All right, moving right along, is that, is that everything except for the R1 building?
Oh, yes. It's late. On page seventy-nine, there are a series of trees that are running behind 500 Hemlock. Is that just for architectural rendering? Okay, so there are no trees there?
Not part of the project.
Okay, very good.
Okay, R1, Mayor, Councilman Pappin, do you have a suggestion, ideas, inspiration?
Oh, sorry.
Just so that we're clear, there are street trees on California.
No, these are running behi- I'm...
Oh, behind the Hemlock neighborhood? That's...
Which may someday become a bike trail, so I was just curious.
That's whatever that built...
Okay.
It's really hard to tell, I don't think this is the right design here, but they've got, they're kind of on your side, yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, they angled it, yeah.
They just, they kind of angled the pieces, and that's a really bad angle to it. It makes the, where's your R1 there?
Oh, it's right there on Franklin. Oh, I know where that is, yeah, that's that building right at Franklin and Pine.
Um...
It's Pine, I think, right?
No, that's Austin. One down. I think it's Austin, it's Franklin and Austin, I think.
Whole thing?
Crosses here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's...
Specific plan?
Yeah, it's just, it's too late for this, but it's, where's your...
The community, so the push is, is, you know, we had more about these.
Yeah, and so what they did was kind of angle these pieces here. And it made it exceptionally interesting, instead of just the...
Right, but this is not one...
Yeah, and like I said, you can still do it here, it textured, yeah, it kind of, yeah, it really textured these pieces in such a way. It was really unique and...
Fair enough.
So if you had your own...
Oh. Oh, okay, I thought she wanted to speak again.
Sorry, give us one second here. It's a thought process.
Sorry, excuse me. Okay.
You see?
Okay.
It's, you can't really tell from here.
So on this design, what it did was, bring up the R1.
It is R1.
So the R1 we're on. So what it did was just, not that view, the other view. Owen, he's got, you've got your corners, where's your corner here?
That's two.
There's R1.
I have a...
So it, yeah, it's too hard to see here.
The top roof on R1, over that, whatever that area is going to be, it's completely rectangle, or is there a curve to it?
So if you had your...
I, the front edge does have a curve. I thought it did, and I like the curve. Okay.
Councilmembers, do you have any comments for us?
I don't unless there's a thing suggested.
And do we need to ask for an extension beyond midnight?
Well, we still have four minutes and...
We are going to have to...
Let's just have, let's just ask to have an, extend to 12:15, just to get everything done.
So...
Okay. Agreement, we have consensus.
Still want this to shut down? I know.
I'm going to write on this later.
Oh, oh, the motion.
Well, you don't need them to look the same. So, and it was just very subtle. But it made it much more square. So, and it's done by texture.
They sent you the links?
No. No, it was kind of how you shaped the...
Ask for a motion?
While we move, while we try to figure out what we are looking at here from this building in San Francisco, could we have a...
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to drop off. You guys go ahead and finish the rest, okay? I have a long day tomorrow.
Okay.
Good luck tomorrow.
No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Best of luck. Thank you for sticking around at this hour.
Okay, good night.
Okay, good night. Okay. Should we go forward with, with item number seven, which is the specific plan amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need a staff report?
No. It was already part of the staff report.
Oh, good, good.
Okay. And that's, I'll say that's part of the same public hearing.
So...
Do we have a motion? Can we just do it with the board now?
A resolution, the change, the one change is a change in the, in the diagram.
Yes. This is a very narrow amendment to the specific plan, just for the 45, removing the 45-degree angle set back next to Hemlock Drive.
I'll make the motion for a second.
Okay. You just want to use, let's just go with the board since all four of us are here. Okay? Votes, please.
The motion passed with a vote of 401 with Mayor Lee absent. Excused.
Okay. Okay. Are we ready to go on R1?
Did you want to talk about the sign?
Sure. Let's talk about the sign, the Sarah Station sign.
What about our...
What is the council, the council's desire on that sign?
My only concern, if we did it the way you were suggesting and you're sitting on, standing on these balconies, you'd be looking at the sign.
Block their view.
Right. So if you keep it flush, I also don't know what the wind would do through it when you've got balconies right there.
Your design of the, of the angles, I like that design. I've seen it throughout the city. I'm a little nervous that it would be a bit much for something this size. It's actually on a pretty big building down there. You know, I know we want to get as far as we can here, but the mayor's concern about it being kind of flat...
Is there a way we can leave this in the hands of staff to, to look at that so we can vote to approve and staff looks at it one more ti, the two of you work it out?
I don't know if they have the clear direction as to what we...
Yeah.
I mean, I can get you an exact photo tomorrow, but I can't do it today. It's not coming up.
Okay. It is based on the fact that we took out all the balconies.
I think it's the art.
I mean, the problem of flatness with the R1 building is that all the articulation, when you take out all the balconies, okay, which we did, and it's fine, you know, that's what the neighbors wanted, we did it. But once you do that, you, you, you impact what is otherwise articulation.
I think, I think, but I could be wrong. The area that Councilwoman Papin is talking about is the corner, the El Camino and California corner, that one wall that used to be the, the maroon-red.
Right.
That now has the balconies jetting into it.
Right.
But is doing something with the texture, but there are already balconies there. So you've, I like the balconies. You've added more...
All I can say is I can get you a picture of it tomorrow and I don't, it's just not happening and it's, the witching hour has passed.
So I think she's talking about only that one strip there.
Is, if you can provide us tomorrow, whether they will, can we just give it to staff and we will, and make that a condition and staff will, will put it into the, I mean, you're talking about one wall, one, one facade of, you know, four feet or five feet.
Okay.
Just that corner piece which would be...
El Camino and, and...
It's the, just opposite the Sarah Station sign, so not the stair, sign with the wall, it's just that one wall right there.
Fine. I mean, just tell us what color or what material you want on it and, and we'll make that adjustment.
Is it a change of the material or a change of the shape?
And we got...
It's a change in the shape, so where it's not angled, it'd be more like if it was a, a cur, octagon type.
Octagon.
Well, that is the building. Well, you're good. That is the building, the Rockwell Building.
Yep.
Oh, oh, just a little bit of, I see. I like that.
It's a trim.
Yeah, well, it, it actually, it, it's putting, it's, it's monochromatic, so it's, it's a wall coming down and it has some chevrons, a simple chevron, a simple point going through.
It's here, it's the Rockwell Building.
It just adds a little bit of difference.
Bring up the Rockwell Building. Are we allowed to do that or is that like stealing somebody's designs? Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just a trim. That's something we've got to do. Well, I just, see what it looks like. It's a little trim.
Elaine, you just had it up there.
You just had it up there.
Oh, I just had it.
Right there.
To me, what, what you're asking for, why don't we just add that as an art aspect? Okay? Because what you're asking for is really a, 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 a design, a, a design on the facade.
I stand corrected, that's, that's the wrong building, for the record.
It's cosmetic. We can add...
Wrong.
That's the right one, right? I mean, it'd be interesting to see what that looks like if it is just a...
So we can add, we can add cosmetics to the building?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's what you're asking, that's what that is. It look, to me, it looks as though it's just, it's just a veneer that's done in a, in a pattern that goes down the side. And what, we could provide that as one of the art things that would be approved, you know, that, that little piece of wall would come back as a, as a, as a, as a beast of art.
I like that, what Gina brought up. It's not exactly what I was looking for, but, I mean, just...
So what Commissioner Papin is actually describing is it's an articulated frame on the fenestration on the Rockwell Building is what it is. I know the building. Yeah.
So technical when you say... So that, I could, I could be happy with approving the building with that coming back as a piece of art that would be approved. If you're just open to discussing it with staff, I think that's as far as we're going to get people. We're burning on, burning on both sides here. The candle at both ends.
Okay.
That's not exactly what I was looking for, but I'll find something.
Okay. So if you're ready otherwise to vote on a resolution, the conditions would be that the art come back to you prior to the building permit and that the feature for this, for this corner of the building come back to you as part of that review, so that...
Can we include the, the sign of Sarah Station as part of that feature or part of what is to be reviewed unless...
Sure. It's up to you.
I, I, I'd prefer a bladed sign. I don't think it has to necessarily be all the way from the 10th floor down to the second floor. It could be more condensed.
Yes. Let's just bring it back.
Fair enough.
The sign and the little piece next to it, we bring those back as art and we have it approved before.
Okay.
My partner's probably going to shoot me to agree to this.
Okay.
All right. So otherwise you have a resolution in front of you. We will add those conditions in and to the final version before it's signed, but you, otherwise you have a resolution in the packet for the overall approval of the design review and it includes the signs and the lighting, all those other factors. Okay. Could somebody make a motion in a second? Just excuse the board.
Oh, we have a machine.
Go ahead. We have a machine, we're all here. Second?
Um, I think so.[1702.16]